We're ready. Let's bring all of our Public Works people up. We've got to balance this out. Come on, some of you guys have got to get over here a little bit. Yeah, yeah. Pat, I'm going to turn it over to you and you talk about what's going on.
You bet, whenever you're ready.
All right, welcome to our Des Moines City Council meeting. And today is a very special day and quite frankly, a special week. It's National Public Works Week. And I'm going to turn it quickly over to Pat Kozitz, who is going to kind of give us an update on everything that's going on. Pat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. National Public Works Week occurring the third week of May is a time set aside by the American Public Works Association to recognize these men and women that provide the infrastructure maintenance and operation and provide the essential services necessary for everyday life in this community. Everything from our sewer systems and our street systems to the solid waste surfaces and street sweeping, we work in conjunction with our other city departments to make sure life in this community is manageable. And we appreciate all the support from the public in doing this, and we're pleased to be of service. Thank you.
So quickly, I'm going to read our proclamation, which declares this National Public Works Week. Reads as follows. Proclamation, whereas public works personnel operate and maintain infrastructure, provide services essential for everyday life and economic growth, and provide leadership in floods, snowstorms, and natural disasters. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work services and maintenance programs such as sanitation, sewers, streets, forestry, and wastewater reclamation. And whereas the protection and preservation of the area's natural resources for the benefit of future generations depends on the sustainability of these services and programs. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these functions, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works and engineering officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Department of Public Works and Engineering are materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the public work that these folks perform. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2014, is National Public Works Week in the city of Des Moines. And I call upon all of our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works and engineering officials make every single day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Let's again give these people a great big hand. Pat, I'm going to put you right in the middle, and we're going to take a picture. And if everybody will kind of get tight so we can get everybody in one. Oh, my hat. This must be your hat. I think we need a different one. Timmy, can you see?
Yeah, I can see just fine.
Okay. She can see you, you can see her.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, you know, Timmy, you're escaping this here with, you know, the American. Now, if everybody's prepared, I'd like to have our City Council, and let's try to drag the City Manager up here as well. And as long as you sit at the table, Jeff, why don't you come up too? As everybody comes up, we've got a special day today. And for one of our city employees. We'll keep you right in front here, buddy.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I hope. We'll slide in behind you.
Watch your back. Today is Richard Clark's last City Council meeting. And so, now...
That's not a po— I mean, that's not that we're trying to get rid of you or anything.
I don't want anybody to get this wrong.
What time is it?
So, the city of Des Moines recognizes Richard A. Clark, who on the 30th day of May 2014, who have served 40 years of loyal service as a career employee in the City Manager's Office, showing continuous and devoted public service toward the goal of an improved city government. And I've got to tell you, I think on behalf of all of us, city employees, citizens, and especially the City Council and our city attorney, Rick, you've done a wonderful job in Morgue Amicia. And we've got a little certificate here that I just read that is signed by the full City Council, and we're going to give you a couple of minutes. And should we limit him to three minutes? What do you guys...
How about one minute?
Okay, all right, Rick.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members, and city attorney, and who else is back here? You know, it's really been an honor to have been the City Manager for the city of Des Moines for the last eight years. And then, of course, I was working in the manager's office before that, and really started in the city planning department back in 1973. And it's really been a great run. And one of the really nice things about being in the City Manager's Office, and really in the time before that, is you kind of get this front row seat to watch the city grow and develop and change. And it's absolutely fascinating work. I've always had a huge interest in cities and communities and what makes them tick, and what makes them tick well. And we've watched Des Moines grow and develop, and it's done so well, based on a lot of things. And, you know, being in the City Manager position, you kind of get a lot of applause there on your way from something. You get a few rotten apples, too, from time to time. But a lot of really great things have happened here. And I—people say nice things to me all the time about that. But the fact of the matter is, it's not me that does all these great things. It's the whole organization and institution, beginning with the mayor and council. Our mayor, TM Franklin County, is a great mayor. The council has been a great council, and there's been changes over time. But the interesting thing is, they've always managed to provide great leadership when the city needed it. And it's been there, and it's been great. And I frankly don't think people in the community recognize what a strong elected leadership we've had in this city. It's been really great. And the same thing goes for the city organization. It's really strong, great people up and down the ranks, and not just at the top levels of our departments, but also down in the rank and follow the organization. It's really great. You know, one thing about city governments is that they are permanent institutions in the community. They're always there. You can have a major disaster, and city government is always there. You can have great times, and city government is always there. Always there to make sure they do the right thing. And if you think about all the institutions and people and programs that impact community, I challenge anybody to think of an institution that impacts a community more than city government does. It's one of those durable things that has such a wonderful impact on the community. And if you look across the country, you can find cities that frankly haven't done as well as Des Moines. And I think in many cases, you find that the leadership and the quality of the workforce that we have here just hasn't been the case. And so, I've had this wonderful opportunity to be the head of an organization over the last eight years that's so strong and so good and done so many great things for the community. But frankly, it's really a testament to not me so much as it is to the mayor and council and the organization for being as strong and good as they are. And of course, we can't forget the people. The people vote for this mayor and council. So really, maybe the real wisdom, the real congratulations for all the great things in Des Moines belong to the people of Des Moines, which of course, is the truth. So, thank you all for being here and for the recognition. And mayor and council, thank you for the nice certificate. I appreciate it. And I'll see you around.
We're going to let you get away. Yeah. And what are we going to do? Right here?
Here in bad weather, or in Long Look Garden, right outside.
All right. So, next week, the 26th?
Twenty-eighth.
The 28th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, we're going to have a reception for Rick. If there's inclement weather, we're going to be in here. Otherwise, we're going to be outside at Long Look Garden. So, like to everybody that can come and will help celebrate Rick's graduation, onto his next opportunity. But any rate, we hope you all can be there. All right, prior to the beginning of our City Council meeting, we're going to have a quick invocation. And today, it's going to be presented by our own City Council member, Chris Coleman. Mr. Coleman, and if you would begin in a second, I would ask that everybody stand at this time if you would like to participate.
I—am I on here? I came out here because I put some—
Screen—some pictures on the screen, and I hope you pay attention. Last night, I was on my way home, and it was about 7:30. I went by Tower Park at the intersection of Beaverdale and Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. And it struck me how wonderful our public spaces are. At 7:20, 7:25 last night, the park was filled with hundreds of people that were there playing soccer, softball, baseball, tennis, soccer, volleyball. There was a picnic going on. It was amazing, because there was probably people, basketball, of every race and color from countries all over the world, playing and enjoying our public space. And it made me very excited and proud of the city that we have. I just wanted to take a second, because this coming Monday, we celebrate Memorial Day. And people have sacrificed greatly so that we could enjoy our community, our places, and have freedom to pursue happiness all over. And the city of Des Moines gives us great chances to do that. So today, I hold up all those veterans and the people that are working overseas as we prepare for Memorial Day. And I thank all the public servants here in Des Moines that make spaces like this and places here in Des Moines so valuable and so used that give us such a sense of pride about who we are. And lastly, I would sincerely like to just offer a prayer of thanks for Rick Clark and his leadership, to wish him and his family many blessings as he enters a new phase of his life. We're very blessed to have had his service, his commitment, his integrity here at this city, from his earliest jobs on the front line to leading the city the last more than half decade. So, just a quick prayer of thanks for his leadership and commitment to all the things that we love about Des Moines. Quick moment of silence in your own hearts. Thank you.
All right, let's call the meeting order, and I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Want to welcome everybody to our City Council meeting. And I do want to mention one more thing before we get started here officially, although we are officially in session. Last week, we had a rather important event in the city of Des Moines. And we had people from all over the country talking about the future of this country and how we prepare Des Moines, state of Iowa, the United States of America for sort of a changing world and what it is that we do. And I will tell you that we were proud to be host for this convening of a White House task force. And I wanted to recognize some of our city staff real quickly that really played an important part in it. From the manager's office, we had Laura Graham. I don't know if Laura's here, but she certainly played a big part in it. We had Candy Rindell, who helped us. Des Moines Police Department helped with security over at the World Food Prize. Monica McCloskey out of the manager's office and the city and council office played a major part as well. But I want you to know, one other person here, and I don't know if she's here, is Amanda here? Amanda Romer, really, this event would not have come off if it wasn't for Amanda. And she did a wonderful job. She worked every single day it was here. She worked, I would guess, at least the month or six weeks before, at least 40 hours a week on this, let alone her other responsibilities here. And I would like to thank all of our staff, and if everybody would give them a hand, and Amanda especially. So, thank you all again, and hopefully, we'll have more of those kinds of events coming up. So, keep your tools sharp. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. It's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none. We're okay with a voice vote?
To approve the agenda, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? The item passes. Item two is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 27. Item four, W, Councilmember Hensley, and originally aye, but I think Christine, I'll just let you speak on that one. Item four, Z, Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item six, Councilmember County and Moore vote no. Item seven, Councilmember Moore votes no. Item 17, Councilmember Mahaffey registers a conflict of interest. And item 24B, Councilmember Gray wishes to speak. Are there—
Mayor, I'd like to enter a no vote on number five.
Okay, a no vote on number five.
I mean, you're doing it, man. You just leave it as is your weeknight.
We deny the yes vote.
Yeah, because it's not—
We only place yes, and thanks for the correct.
Yeah. I know it's confusing.
Okay. Are there any other items that anybody else would have pulled for additional consideration? Seeing none? You want to... All right? Everybody, item's been moved. Any discussion?
Seven, yes.
All right, let's start then. Item four is licenses and permits approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following. W is the quick star at 2701 Ingersoll on a C beer license. Mrs. Hensley?
As a result of a number of conversations with neighborhood and the business association on Ingersoll, I'd like to refer this back to police and legal for a initial review to make sure that we have some letter of understanding similar to what we've done with other businesses along these lines. And just make sure and take a hard look at that and have a letter of agreement as to what they will and will not do before I send that.
Seven, yes.
All right, that takes us to item 24B. 24B is under bids from the following. This bid is from Hewlett Packard, Mark Heard President, for five replacement servers for a Western States Contracting Alliance, WSCA, price agreement for the use by IT Department, $60,850.37, Council Communication Number 14-224. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I'm in the server resale business myself, and I thought this seemed to be a touch high until Laurie Hell's got to me. And this is for virtual servers. Now, virtual servers are pretty new in the industry. They came out about five years ago, but they're becoming very much mainstream. They are a little bit more expensive. They do have a lot more horsepower, but they can load on more applications. It saves space in the data center, saves BTU, which saves overall costs. And I'm glad to see we're going that way. So, I just wanted to bring it to our attention that our IT department is thinking of our best interest and moving ahead in the best technological way that they should. So, I'm going to move 24B.
Seven, yes.
All right, that completes the consent agenda and takes us to item 28, which is an ordinance, second consideration. This is on the request from ST Investments LLC to rezone property at 200 Southeast 6th Street from Limited C3B, which is a central business district, commercial to Limited C3, central business, mixed use, to allow a rental car display lot use. A is a final consideration under that of the ordinance. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Any discussion on this item?
I'll move five. Go ahead.
Todd Vonstein, 509 East 5th in Des Moines. I just want to remind everybody of the precedence that we're setting here by setting up a neighborhood, showing its success, developing another neighborhood behind it with the same success, build on the same integrity, and then we go back and start changing zoning. So, it just seems like a really hard precedence to put in place. So, I just wanted to throw that back out there again. Anything for me? Anything for me?
Anybody have any questions? Todd, go ahead.
Todd, this is a real hard one for me. We promised that this would be C3B in that area. This was a property that was M1, as you know, that was rezoned to C3B. Now, they want to take it back to M1. I've always taken the stance I support the neighborhood, and your neighborhood board is supporting this. I trust that, beginning with possibly tonight, there'll be more involvement in your neighborhood board as to what they should be taking a look at in their area.
Over the weekend, Mike Kinter and I and Bob Echolber spent numerous hours preparing a proposal tonight for the Historic East Village Board, which, that's why Mr. Kinter's not here tonight. He's going to the board to make sure that they have a clear understanding of where we've come, how we got to where we're at, and how we can continue the successes with staying to C3B and getting as much C3B in place as possible. And so, he's at the board meeting right now for HEV Board, trying to help clarify the new members of where we've come, where we're at, and how we're going to get the market district where it needs to be. So, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Mayor? I've also had many conversations with Mike. I haven't spoke with you, but I've talked to the Historic East Village, their board. You know, they are for this. This is an area that has sat empty for a long time, and I think it's going to be good. I mean, I'm going to support this, just as the Neighborhood Association has, and, you know, we'll go forward as progress and as the market goes in around it, just like it did where this particular lot is. We'll make arrangements at that time.
Thank you, Councilman. Our point is not about this project. We understand this is done, and we can't do anything about this one, and maybe there's another one that we're still trying to figure out, but what we're trying to do is not let it happen again, and make sure that the HEV Board is well-educated on what the market district means, what C3B means, and what it meant to get East Village to where it's at. So, I'm not really speaking against this project as much as I am the way it happened, and that it's, we have to be very careful with the fact that we set the zoning up, and now we can just change it when we want. And I hate to see that happen all over the city now. So, that's all. I just wanted to-
Well, I respect your comments. I think we'll take individual cases, and that's what I've said to Mike and I've said to the board. You know, as individual projects come up, we will look at them, and we'll look at them as P&amp;Z, we'll look at them as a council, and as your neighborhood, you know, feels like it, and, you know, I think that's how we go forward.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thanks, Todd. Anybody else speak on this? Joe, I think before we vote, and I know you have a motion, I had some similar concerns in moving forward. But I think as we look at the large picture here and look at the other development that's happening, and knowing that we have to move a few pieces around to make this happen, and we know that not far from here, there was a sort of a conditional, we'll say, intermediate-term arrangement done for another business down in that area. I think that we all recognize that, long-term, the use of this area is going to evolve and become much more commercial, much more residential, much more retail, and probably less of a display lot kind of a situation, and I think even the tenant enterprise recognized that moving down the road. And I think with that understanding from all the parties, that I'm going to support this tonight to move both 28 and 28A. But I note, Todd and all the other speakers that we had before in here, that this is a long-term vision, and we don't want to turn a vision around just to benefit things or one, you know, individual. But I think that in part, what we're doing here tonight allows this whole vision for the East Village to continue and evolve as we see, knowing that we've got a very important connection down there, a $200 million connection to the southeast side, right to the heart of downtown, and we think that's an important connection and know how we have to develop in and around it. So, I'm going to turn it back to you, Joe, and-
Yeah, with that being said, I'm going to move 28, and I'm going to move 28A, because I know we're under a tight time schedule, and I'd like to get them both moved.
I agree. I think we've given plenty of notice, and we backed off on that a week ago or a meeting ago.
Yep.
On the A, so.
Seven, yes.
All right, next is ordinance's first consideration. This amending Chapter 102 of the municipal code regarding street use permits, Council Communication number 14-228. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, could we have a motion? Okay, 29 has been moved.
Seven, yes.
Takes us to item 30. Item 30 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication number 14-239. A is increasing parking meter time limits, Grand Avenue between 15th and 16th Street. B, revisions to agree with current signing conditions on the east side of 9th Street, between University and Indiana Avenue. And C is school passenger loading and unloading, 30-minute limit, west side of East 39th Court. Is there anyone here to speak to these items, which amend Chapter 114, Council Communication 14-239?
Seeing none, I'll move item 30, A, B, and C, and request waiting of the second and third reading, non-prepublished.
Seven, yes.
Item 30 is amending Chapters 62 of the municipal code regarding the Des Moines Human Rights Commission and duties of the commission and the director, Council Communication number 14-245. A is a final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn this over to you in a moment. This is, we've referred to the city manager and to legal and to human rights, and we've had a number of joint meetings between the city council and human rights, talking about our goals and direction and supporting the work that this commission and this department does to help the citizens of the city of Des Moines. We, I want to thank the commission for the hard, hard work that they've done over the past year, and quite frankly, through all the years. But I think they've really focused and strategized on moving forward and knowing what the commission ought to look like and how we protect the rights in the 21st century. City manager, at the direction of the commission and the council, was asked to give us some recommendations. Those are before us this evening, and I'm going to now turn it over to the manager to quickly highlight that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I think you did a great job of teaming this up, Mr. Mayor. In effect, before you, council, is an ordinance amendment that follows through on the recommendations that were presented at the joint meeting of the city council and the Human Rights Commission. In essence, what this does is establish the city manager as the person that would work with the Human Rights Director in terms of supervising their day-to-day work, and also in terms of, in the event there was to be a new Human Rights Director, the city manager would take on that responsibility with the concurrence of the Human Rights Commission. But at the same time, it recognizes that, under Iowa law, it's the Human Rights Commission that sets policy and basically sets the, reviews the cases and determines the direction and sets the priorities for the work that's to be done by the Human Rights Department. That's a very important distinction in the law, and it's important for us to keep in mind that the administrative functions properly belong under the city manager, but the policy matters stay with the Human Rights Commission. This ordinance amendment recognizes those two important distinctions, and it's my hope that, if council approves this amendment, that it will allow us, I think, to go forward with that particular function in city government in a way that hopefully will be more able to cope with the challenges that are in front of the commission today. And I would also say that, under this arrangement, in the past, the Human Rights Staff has been part of city government, but really, in a sense, hasn't been integrated fully into the operations of city government, and I think that's been, actually, served as a detriment to the ability of the organization. I think with this, the Human Rights Director and the staff can function more like a city department and can therefore, I think, access a lot of the administrative support services that we provide to all departments. So, I view this as something that enhances the workings of the staff, provides more support for that activity, yet also preserves the roles and prerogatives of the Human Rights Commission, which are established by law in Iowa. I should also say that the amendment before you was drafted by the city legal department under the leadership of Jeff Lester, so I am confident that it is drafted in an appropriate way that makes sure that we address the different requirements of state law. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions? I think we've all had a chance to review it over the past number of months. I'll quickly now open it up to the general public. Does anybody have any comments regarding the recommendations here tonight that would amend All right. Seeing none.
I'll move 31.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll move 31.
All right.
And 31A.
All right. Comment, Mr. Coleman? Anything?
I was, two things I was going to add. The substance of this is really strong, and I agree with it. I want to, as the mayor did, recognize the commissioners and the staff of the Human Rights Commission for working hard this entire year and some of last year in trying to find a new day. I think as all of us realize, our citizens give us a lot of latitude to try and do our work the way we want, and so long as there's really good results. And I know that everybody on the staff and the commission is committed to good results. As a policy matter, I think these changes make that more likely and make it easier for them to deliver positive results. So, number one on the substance. Number two, for those of you that get your fill of us Monday afternoons at 4:30, we also meet on Monday mornings when we have council meetings for what we call a workshop. And this morning, we had a great presentation by Larry Hulse, who's the designated interim city manager, and Rick Clark, the outgoing city manager, on where we stand on goals. So, we talked about this this morning as well, as one of the things that we ask Rick to work on in his final months here and to get it to this point. So, I'm really pleased that before he leaves, this is on our action to change the ordinance. There's still real work to be done. And to that end, I mentioned this earlier to a couple of you, I just want to get this on the record, in case it turns out to be an opportunity we want to proceed. I don't want it to seem like there was ever a back-room deal or anything. The first action that we had this year as a council was accepting Rick's resignation, and at the time, we talked about what we wanted him to do in this period, and we also acknowledged that there's been times where we've called on previous employees, Bruce Bergman being a recent one, to help us on some specific issues. I just want to say, and maybe ask the personnel committee, to continue to look at those options. Mr. Clark has been very helpful on this. Maybe as we implement some of these, this is one thing that he could help us with on a short-term basis, but there's been some things in terms of a transition that we've used. We've never done it when, for instance, Mr. Lester wasn't comfortable with Bruce Bergman, so that would be true of Larry and whoever follows Larry. But I think there are some ways that we could use Rick possibly under contract on a couple of things that we're trying to get around the last lap, a number of those we talked about this morning, so. No action tonight, but I do think this is one example where we have some work to do still.
Right. All right, as we're voting, I just want to, I see we have some, a couple of members of our Human Rights Commission. I just, if you would give us sort of an acknowledgement that we're, I think you've reviewed this opportunity and agree that we're on the right path here. Is that correct? Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Seven, yes.
Our next item is under communications and reports. Item 32 was not used. We'll move to item 33 from Larry James and Kathy Dickel of City Sounds, the Des Moines Public Piano Project, to speak regarding placing a couple of pianos on the public right-of-way.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry James, 4209 Kingman Boulevard, Des Moines. I won't take much of your time tonight. I'm here with Catherine Dickel with Midwest Ticks. This is a crazy idea that we came up with individually several months ago. We figured out that both of us were thinking of the same idea, came together in the last month, and kind of wanted to present this to council for your support, consideration. This is an idea that's been used all over the world. It's putting pianos in public right-of-way for passersby to play. And what you ask, why would someone want to do that? It is because it is, really is a generator of activity on the street. Businesses that have had pianos nearby have had the opportunity to get their people as customers, so it's been very well-received. Just a quick overview, other places in the country, this has happened. If I can get this to work. There it is. Boston, New York City, Iowa City, Mason City. And so, I think Des Moines is ready for this. We've had a lot of support from just talking to people anecdotally, and as an attorney, my main concern is always liability, and I'm certain that Mr. Lester's main concern would be liability as well. The primary cost for this is insurance. All the funds will be privately raised. There'll be, we'd be asking the city to assist with locating sites, working with staff throughout the downtown area, possibly two to three sites this first year, look at it as a pilot project to see if there's any issues. You may have heard a piano was vandalized in Mason City over the weekend that was done. Unlike that, these would actually be secured to the ground and covered and locked at night. So, we're very confident that, knock on wood, you're always going to have idiots, there wouldn't be issues. We would be asking the city for assistance in attaching these to the sidewalk. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Catherine, in case you have any additional things to add.
I'm just here to answer any questions you might have on the details of the program. We have worked very closely with the Iowa City Downtown Chamber and West Music, who facilitate the program for Iowa City, and they also will be doing it for us. So, there are some details, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have about the project.
So, quick question. So, parks in most of these cities kind of has something to do with us, so that the thing is coordinated through Parks Department?
Actually, in Iowa City, it's coordinated through the Downtown Chamber Association, so.
Would you see these mostly being downtown?
I would see them being downtown to start off with, certainly. I mean, if the project grows, if the pilot works well and it grows, we could see, we'd love to see pianos in the Ingersoll neighborhood or the Beaverdale neighborhood or, you know, other kind of high-traffic areas where the public could enjoy them.
So, you'd be comfortable if somebody put a motion together that said we'd refer this to legal and Parks and Downtown Community Alliance to see what kind of a program we could put together to even yet do it this summer?
Yes.
Okay. Christine?
And I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think it's, you know, it's exciting, and it's doing exactly what we want to do in the downtown area. I'm also concerned, or not concerned, I'm not concerned, but I know that there is concern about doing it in parks and what would be some of the precedents that that would set. So, my motion would be to refer it to the city manager's office, legal, Parks and Rec, figure out how we can get it done this year on a pilot basis, because you've got the money for the liability. You would be purchasing the pianos. Maybe you just do it on a very small scale, two to three. to three. I understand that there's some private businesses that have agreed that they would allow them to be installed. I think one's East Village, one's on the Western Gateway side. And then come back and reevaluate it at the end of this outdoor season and figure out if it's something that you want to, if we want to move forward and expand it, and if we could do it then on public with the parks.
Yeah, I mean, we have laid the groundwork with everybody, so that should be a pretty quick process. We have talked to the Downtown Partnership, Parks and Rec, Candy, in, at the city. So everybody's kind of informed about what we want to do. And we also have talked to some private businesses and some nonprofits. I think what's really exciting about the project, other than what it does itself, is that it is a public-private partnership. There's private businesses, nonprofits, city, municipality, everybody working together to get the project pulled off. So any assistance, that would be great to keep that moving forward, would be wonderful.
Manager wants to make a comment, and I think Ms. Gatto does.
I just wanted to, I think the motion, the direction you're going seems appropriate to pursue it on perhaps a pilot basis. But my question is, you talk about placement on a sidewalk. What would your thought be if there were like a piece of property that was not actually technically sidewalk, but adjoining a sidewalk? Does that matter to you, exactly where the piano is?
It really doesn't matter. We, really, the only priority we have is that they're in high-traffic areas that people will actually see them, so, and want to play them. So we don't kind of want them way out in the middle of nowhere.
But if there's a little flexibility in terms of exactly where it's placed, that might make it easier for the city to deal with that.
Definitely. And some of the places that we have been looking at, you know, like the River Walk, for example, we're looking to put those next two partnering businesses that will provide some of that daily caretaking, maybe even sponsorships for those pianos as well. So, again, reaching out to lots of different people to find those right locations and looking forward to working with the city to find those.
Joe?
That particular one in Iowa City, just a quick story. I had a 10-year-old baseball team that I took up there for the state tournament, and I had one young boy that could play the piano. And my team stood around that piano for an hour. And he played, and they sang, and, I mean, it was awesome. So I would be definitely for that. I mean, it was amazing to watch them all get together and do that. I think it's a great, great thing.
I would just add to the motion that it's time-sensitive, just because we want to take advantage and have it done sooner rather than later, to take advantage of June, July, and August. So if it's something that's going to need to come back, if we could work to have it come back at the next council meeting, June 9.
West Music is already working to identify the pianos. The pianos are not purchased, by the way, they are donated. So, you know, all of the costs that go into the project are really to install them and, you know, protect the public from liability issues. So it's down the road that way, too, so.
Might be able to find your piano.
Wonderful.
We might, too. Love the idea. I'd really like it referred to a couple of the neighborhood associations, too, outside of downtown. You mentioned DCA, which I think is good, but, you know, Beaverdale or Ingersoll or some of the places we have streetscape going on would be, would be great. And I think it would be great to have it at high-traffic places where there's special events, outside the Iowa Event Center, or in front of the fairgrounds, just as a way, even if it's temporary, to kind of reinforce this little branding that we have, as so many people are coming in from around the state. And I'll bet they would be glad to partner.
Yeah, I think as we get this pilot off the ground and we kind of test it out here and see how it works through all the different partners, it could, we could have, you know, 30 pianos all over the city.
I'll bet you get more than that donated tomorrow.
All right. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it forward. Ms. Coleman?
Seven, yes.
All right. Let's now move to the hearings. It is 5:06. First item on hearings is on the vacation and lease of public right-of-way for a sidewalk cafe in the alley west of and adjoining 210 Court Avenue, Tonic. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the applicant and requires six votes. And C is the consideration of a permanent outdoor service privilege for a Class C liquor license. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Item 35.
I will move item 35, A, B, and C.
Seven, yes.
All right, Ticks, item 36. On the vacation of various street and alley rights of way between Southeast Second and Southeast Sixth Streets and between Shaw Street and the Des Moines River for the purpose of dedicating a portion of such right-of-way and other adjoining city-owned property as parkland to replace Allen Park. Council Communication number 14-233. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the Park and Recreation Director, requires six votes. And C is dedicating city-owned property in the vicinity of Murray Street and Southeast Sixth Street as parkland for the relocation of Allen Park. Is there anybody here to speak on item 36?
I'll move 36, A, B, and C.
Item 37. On the conveyance of a portion of the vacated East-West Alley right-of-way adjoining 2815 Franklin Avenue to Beverly J. Muggen for $270. Council Communication number 14-219. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Seven, yes.
Item 38. Request from Misty Knight for approval of an amendment to the Tobus Park Estates PUD concept plan for 5,300 Southeast 28th Street to allow necessary use of the property for a home occupation business as a beauty parlor. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move 38.
All right, item 39. Item 39 is a proposed amendment to the planning and zoning ordinance regarding the allowed operation size and location of electronic signs and multi-vision display signs and use of conversion credits earned by the removal of an off-premises advertising sign. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Now, I'm going to include in this also item 40, which is on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance to establish a citywide freestanding sign overlay district. We will vote on these items separately, but we might as well discuss them because they kind of pertain to the same thing. Would you agree, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. The record would reflect that both hearings are opened and conducted simultaneously, and anything that's provided for one hearing will be considered as part and parcel of the other hearing, but the votes will be tabulated separately, as you indicated.
All right, thank you. All right, so item 39 and 40, both of these items are regarding amendments around location of electronic signs, multi-vision display signs, and the use of the conversion credit earned, on the one hand, and the other is the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to establish a citywide freestanding sign overlay district. Are there any folks here to speak to that? All right. So I'd like to see sort of a show of hands. How many folks do we have intending to speak here?
Are you getting back to 34, or have you been to skip 34?
Well, we're required generally to finish items prior to opening hearing items. Hearing items are to start at 5:00. So we sort of suspend that part of the council meeting, but we'll be back to 34.
You had to agree and then skip it, you know.
That's right. And we did that as a matter of, that's how we handle, we're by city code required to go to hearing items at 5:00, although we let that one go to 5:06. But we'll be back. If that's your item, why, you'll be first up as soon as we complete these.
Yeah, I don't know about me here.
All right, if you'd like, come back next year, that'll be good, too. All right. First speaker, please.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Brian Meyer, 5417 Southeast 29th Street. I'm here in my capacity as an attorney for David Harkin regarding the LED signs. And we've had many meetings on this. I've met with many of the owners of these signs. Our goal is to come up with some kind of compromise where it fits everybody's needs and separate out the discussion on the small LED signs, less than 24 square feet, versus the pole sign each and the billboards, and deal with them separately. Our preference, obviously, is to have no restrictions and keep the ordinance the way it is. As I stated earlier, this is definitely a change, not a clarification, in the ordinance. And in the alternative, I think there's some compromise there that if we're able to grandfather in the signs that have already been approved by the city, in addition to perhaps looking at the timeframe by which they change, the scrolling text, not doing animation, I think David certainly is open to that, and maybe some of the others are. So our goal is to effectively have no change, but if we can sit down and compromise, and maybe over the next two readings, I can work with folks and come up with an ordinance that will work for everybody. So that's our goal. Are there any questions for me?
I do. Just, are you proposing there be no future regulations on, or that all future signs would come under the proposed ordinance that we might draft? Or are you saying, accept this with a grandfathering clause that would then further define how the grandfathered companies can use it?
Well, I think we're open to either one of those. I think that what we're looking for is the people that paid $30,000 for a sign to do certain things, that we allow them, and they were approved by the city, that we allow them to continue. But moving forward with other signs, perhaps come up with an ordinance that makes sense to everybody in terms of, I think, I know what folks are looking for with not doing the animation, getting rid of the animation. But at the same time, the ordinance as written affects scrolling, and maybe we can come up with, and I have not talked to these folks about this, maybe we can come up with some compromise of two seconds instead of the eight seconds that the bigger signs have. Or something that does not allow animation and the flashing and that sort of thing, but something that comes up with, you can still scroll, you can have a change in the sign, but it has to be at a different rate than, eight seconds is just too much for the smaller signs. And I'll let them sort of address that themselves, that specific question, but our goal is to come up with a compromise, but to grandfather in the ones that are already there.
Are you, are you open to a compromise that would grandfather small signs in, but provide a date certain where they were out of compliance?
Yes.
Let's say.
I mean, we're open to that discussion, yes.
Where at least they got their return on their investment over, but they know that in?
Yes, we're open to that.
Okay.
We're open to that. I think, I think we just would like to have a discussion. We haven't really sat down with city staff or anything, knowing this is the first reading.
And for people that are watching that haven't paid as close attention as you have, we're talking about only those signs that have been under a different section of the ordinance that are 24 square feet and smaller.
That's right, Councilman Coleman. That's, what we're looking at is what we believe is a separate ordinance provision, a separate ordinance than the one that the city staff is citing for the larger billboards. We believe that they're two different things and cite it that way in the city code. So we'd like to take a look just specifically at the less than 24 square feet. I mean, if the city, if, when I was on the council and sitting up here where Joe is, or Councilman Gatto, if we had, sorry about that.
You're fine.
If we had, if we had really wanted them to be included in what we did with the billboards, we would not have made the distinction on the 24 square feet. We made the distinction, and that's why we think it is a separate ordinance.
I don't want to, I don't want to drag, drag this out, but I think only a few people will probably talk about this specific subject. We have a moratorium in place right now. So any motion, if we wanted to do what Brian said, should probably include an extension of that moratorium until the, or does the moratorium last until the end of the third reading?
The moratorium would cover the, would last until the end of the third reading, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd be, again, the, if you have a question.
Or could it be a carve-out just for the 24?
Right.
For the smaller signs?
Well, we have it anyway, so.
But I mean, if you went ahead and passed the billboards and there was additional time that we wanted to look at this and make some different recommendations for the smaller signs, we could continue the moratorium on those signs.
There could be, probably not a, maybe not a continuation of the moratorium, but a new moratorium imposed.
It would be specific for those signs.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think we can get it done.
All right. Anybody, anybody else have any questions? Brian?
I just, if I could just wrap up, we just want to make sure that it works for everybody and work with city staff to make sure that our needs are met, too.
All right, thank you. Next.
Dave Harkin, Fort Des Moines Financial Services. Just to go on with Brian's point, this is the size of our sign, the 24.
Do you want to put it down?
Oh, sure.
That's the 24-square-foot sign as in here compared to the rest of the 20. This would be like a clear-channel billboard. The whole thing would be a clear-channel billboard, but ours is very small. We're limited as far as the amount of text or information that can go on. So we're asking that to have the same set of rules is not fitting for this type of, these type of signs. There's very limited viewing area, typically cars are going fast. Eight-second whole time is really the beef of most of our complaints here. You just get one message and boom, they're gone. So we need a little bit more time. Sign purchases were significant cost to small businesses, and changing the rules hurt small businesses. People will go online and shop, at least in my type of field, if I can't put some messages out there. Life events do change. We need to communicate several messages in a very short amount of time. Advertising is essential to any business. Pictures tell many words, they grab attention, and it can be unique. My sign shows thousands of colors, and it's a good-looking sign. It's, the city staff that showed on the planning and zoning, they showed a sign of one of the worst, ugliest LED signs that was possible, and they caked it with the background of a residence or apartments back there. That's not the way our signs look like. My sign doesn't even face a building, another building, another house. It doesn't even face oncoming traffic. So their example, I think, was a little bit offset and not, and Steve has some nice videos that he'll show here in a minute. Brick-and-stone locations pay high increasing property taxes. We support the community with jobs and valuable services. And LED is the future of signs. They're the future of advertising. They're not clutter. It provides life-like images and, well, I'd probably not bring up the municipal building sign in Indianola, but you drive by that when you go on Highway 69. It's a nice-looking sign. It tells some good information. I think we like the Civic Center sign. I think we like the Iowa Cubs sign down here. I like my churches, Christ the King. You know, those are examples of people that probably would be affected, too. A lot of small signs can only scroll. They've got a limited amount of space in that regard. So, anyway, we had trouble getting the information from staff. It took us three months to get the information of who the sign owners were, so we had trouble grouping. And we're asking for four of seven votes today, not to kick the can down the road, not to not make a decision. It's important to these people here and myself. So we ask you for your vote. Thank you.
What does it mean when you say one complaint?
One complaint.
Are you saying that on your sign?
No, no. There was one complaint to the city, to Sue Delavan's office, and based upon that, there was about 65-plus signs. Am I wrong? Please stand, correct me if I'm wrong, because I've done a lot of research here.
There may have been one person that called, but they're representing a large group of people.
They were complaining largely about pole signs, the big clear-channel signs, and the overhead power lines that I look at when I'm on Southeast 14th and going on Merle Hay Road. I understand that. But these aren't clutter.
Okay, I just want to make it clear, it wasn't just one person. That makes it sound like.
One LED, there was more than one LED complaint?
Yes. You're going to be hearing from some people. You're going to be hearing from some people behind you.
Okay.
All right. Any rate, David, I gotta go. Could I, I got a question for you.
Please.
Was this a brand-new sign purchased or was this a replacement sign?
I purchased one in 2002. The LED bulbs go bad in about 10 years. And so I purchased another one in 2012.
You have anything before that?
No. They just really started to gravitate in, you know, 2000, about that time. They change. They're, they're dynamic. They're much different as technology's progressed.
Did you have the building before 2002?
2007.
Oh, okay.
But I had, I was on Phil Watson's...
Oh, I gotcha.
...office. I had a small one and it just scrolled.
All right. Thank you. We'll remind everybody, we've got three minutes for each speaker. Secondly, we'll ask, and hopefully that there won't be any repetition of information, we want to get everybody's all new information we can get up here. But maybe if, if it begins to sound repetitive, we'll ask for a show of hands or something and see how many are in agreement with that and then we can, we can move on. So let's try to keep it moving. Thank you, sir. Give us your name and address.
My name is Steve Davis. I'm the owner of Touch and Go Car Wash at 805 Army Post Road in Des Moines. Thanks for listening. Got some information here. The, get this to advance. Well, we're gonna have technical issues, aren't we? No, I got it. I gotta figure it out. I just gotta be able to see it. Okay. Just tell you a little bit about my business. This is Touch and Go Express Car Wash. It's 805 Army Post Road. We're full-service conveyor, I'm sorry, we're express service conveyor, fully attended. During the day, we wash cars, we prep cars. It's a modern car wash that you don't have to wait in line for very long and does a nice job washing cars. The issue we have, the ordinance, is also the issue that we're going to have with several things, but it affects all electronic signs regardless of size. And as was stated earlier here, the eight-second rule is the problem that we have with the sign. We need to change the sign more often than every eight seconds. As a solution, we'd like to separate that, as he said before, separate the electronic signs from the billboards. The old ordinance might be okay for electronic signs the way it is. The video is the issue, and I think that's what changed earlier this, or last year, is the definition of video changed and therefore, you know, they tried to, where they put enforcement action, or at least letters to say they were going to against all of us who had a sign that moved. This is all I want to do. This is my little electronic sign. I spent $27,000 for this. It's a very small sign. It's 18 inches by four feet. I can't put much on it at a time. To scroll a simple message like that is really what I need to do. And I really can't do it much of any other way. And if you look at the difference in size to my little sign at the bottom versus the billboard up above, you'll get an idea of the scale. But it isn't really the billboard up above, because that's a half a billboard. Behind it, on the backside of that, is a full-size billboard. So you can see the message I have is very small and doesn't make sense to have it in the same regulation as the full-size billboard. So this is the effect of what an eight-second change looks like. And I think trying to go after your heart a little bit about electing a city council member rather than selling a car wash, you might notice how many cars are going by the sign before the sign changes. And this is visible from about 50 to 60 feet away. That's all we get. Now, if you change that to let it change more often...
Wait, wait, wait.
The mystery was there, but now everybody's up here. So if you allow, yeah, you didn't get to see it, did you? It wasn't...
It's not their ward. It's my ward. It's my ward.
No, you're up, you're up there, too. So this is, this is the same sign changing every seven tenths of a second.
Yeah.
It gets the message across at the very limit of sign.
Okay.
I would have loved to buy a bigger sign, a 24-square-foot sign, a bigger, more message at a time, but...
Could we ask you to wrap up?
Yeah, I'm hurrying. Suburbs allow these types of signs. I talked to the manager in Indianola today, Chuck Bergen. He said they don't recognize small signs as anything different than a sign. That's just what they do. As I've mentioned before, the city of Indianola has one of these signs. The U.S. Army Reserve in Des Moines has a sign. Lincoln High School has a sign. Iowa Air National Guard has one of these signs. And if you really think about trying to enforce what's going on in the city right now, there's, there's more than 56 of these. I don't know how many there are, because I didn't make it around the entire city last weekend videoing these. But to try to make an ordinance that you're going to effectively enforce with the small force that you have with all of these signs, and everybody's running on the same way. Everybody has some type of animation going on, some type of video. I think enforcing a sign like, sign ordinance like that might be next to impossible.
All right. You've exceeded your, your limit. Have you, are we at the end?
We're pretty close.
We'll ask you to close it.
One last comment, I guess. This is another scrolling sign. This is on the café on Southeast 14th Street and Army Post Road. Just wanted to say that last Friday night, I ate some fried chicken, because I read that sign while I was videotaping and it was indeed the best chicken in town and I wouldn't have known about it had it not been the sign. So I'll go and close up from there.
That was a good demonstration of what we're talking about. Thank you. Nice question. Can I get a question? Yeah. Before you leave, I want to ask the same question. What, is that a brand-new sign or did you replace a sign?
It was a brand-new.
You had no sign before?
2007. It was a brand-new location, 2007.
Okay.
And if you noticed, all landscaping, that was all per the city's request, so we'd get the activate and all that.
And let me ask you this. I would say roughly you're going to be investing $27,000, about $12,000 extra dollars to do this, to put this sign in. How does that equate to extra business for you?
It's the only way we really have to advertise. It was suggested at the zoning meeting that the way to advertise today is on the internet and get a Google search to pick you first. And I would suggest that to wash a car, a Google search isn't going to do much for you. We do advertise on the internet, too, but there really is no other means to advertise other than maybe billboards or car wash. So this sign gives us the ability to communicate on the street, to tell customers what our special is. We're a $3 car wash right now with a dry and prep and a free vacuum. How do I communicate that any other way, other than the sign that I invested $27,000?
The only thing I'm going to say is that, you know, in word one, anyway, I know just about where every car wash is. I don't need a sign to drag me in there. If I've driven past it already, the sign isn't going to pull me in. I'm just, that's why I want to try and find out how much more money, how much more revenue is that bringing in for you, just by having that sign there?
We've always had it. So I can't answer your question to answer it. I can tell you that when we change the sign and change our car wash, our business doubled.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Jason Poliam, 2113 52nd Street, here in Des Moines, speaking as a resident and also president of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. I want to begin by thanking the council, city staff, and everyone who's participated in this discussion. I can certainly emphasize from the residents' perspective that I've worked with, it hasn't been our intent to cast anyone as the villain. We haven't booed anyone. We haven't hissed at anyone. I think there are some differences of opinion and that's what we're trying to sort here, sort out here today. So from where I'm coming from, there's no personal animus. It's just a matter of trying to decide what's best for our city, what will help improve the appearance of our commercial corridors, which in some cases unfortunately look more or less like anything goes. Councilman Gray has referred to that at times as signage run amok. We do have some examples of that. And what we're saying is, let's try to clean it up. Let's try to tone it down a little bit so we have more, I guess, sane conditions on our corridors. I want to begin by emphasizing, there has been no rush on these proposed changes. We had a 2020 community character plan that was approved by the council almost 14 years ago. That plan said that pole signs and billboards should be prohibited on significant corridors like the gateways that run through my neighborhood. In 2007, the south side revitalization plan was accepted by the city council. That plan emphasized what was referred to as quality signage, generally consistent with what was recommended in the 2020 community character plan. 2008, in my neighborhood, we had a reference to what the appearance of our commercial corridors is like. Quote, "Off-center power lines, signs and billboards create a visual environment that is not appealing in the vicinity of Merle Hay and Douglas." Speaking specific to my neighborhood here, numbers do matter. And I would make the point that as of right now, the conversion credit system for billboards has not served our neighborhood well. We have 12 billboard locations in my neighborhood in a roughly one and a half mile stretch. That includes the commercial nodes that are in the vicinity of Hickman and Merle Hay and Douglas and Merle Hay. And if you'll allow me, on the margin of error on, on the number of actual sign faces, it's roughly 25. We have three digital billboards in the Merle Hay neighborhood and the bulk of those are concentrated in the one-mile stretch between Merle, Urbandale and Aurora on Merle Hay. And we have some situations where some of those billboards are about 100 feet from residential property lines. So people look out their back window, what do they see? A sign 50 or 60 feet up in the air looming over their backyard. I don't think that's a healthy situation.
He's speaking for his neighborhood association. We'll ask you to...
Okay.
Keep moving and speed it up.
There are the locations in our neighborhood. This is what it looks like from a residential backyard on 59th Street. If that sign goes digital, I think you can appreciate the impact. That is what we're looking to avoid. And I'm not aware of anything in the current ordinance that prohibits that sign from going digital. That's what we need to be worried about. And we can't just cross our fingers and hope for the best. You know, it might be legal to convert that to the, to digital. Is it right? Is it right for those residents who back up to that commercial lot? Again, the ordinance hasn't worked for us in the Merle Hay neighborhood. We've had two signs down, taken down, I think in February. We're thankful for that. We thank Clear Channel for doing that. But if we had a conversion credit system that was more favorable for our neighborhood with the three digital billboards that we've had put up, we might have four or six additional faces put down if the commercial, if the conversion credit system was more favorable to our neighborhood. So we want you to look at those things long-term. I would also, I know that I need to wrap up here. We would like to ask that you take a strong look tonight at making part of your recommendations that we, we should not have digital billboards within at least 500 feet of residential property lines or school facilities. You know, I, I think there's a time and place for everything. If it's right next to a residential property line, if it's right next to a school, I don't think that's the time or place for a digital billboard. They're visually, they're more impactful. They use more energy. I don't know if that's consistent with the city's goal to be a green city. So let's, it's all about time and place. And again, let's, let's try to tone it down and, and be more mindful of some of the unintended consequences that can come with some of these new forms of signage. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thanks for your time.
Does anybody have any? Yes.
Jason, this issue basically came out of your neighborhood and your area of town. Tonight, you concentrated on billboards. Is, would it be fair to say that's your number-one worry, is digitized billboards?
It is. Our, our neighborhood association has also been on the record for the past couple of years that we'd like to curtail the usage of pole signs. Not because it's just one sign that, that makes all the difference in the world, it's the dozens upon dozens of them in close proximity and very confined places that, that lends itself to what our neighborhood plan, which the council approved, referred to as visually unattractive, I believe, or something to that effect, visually unappealing.
Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello, guys. Mark Lyle with Ultimate Auto Wash. It's 4411 Southeast 14th Street. Owned the place for seven years. About four years ago, I put in an LED sign. We were struggling trying to get it going. If you look at it, and I have a video of it here in just a second, but if you drive by the street, you're seeing my roof. That's really all you're getting here. But I did, like Steve, take several different videos. See those on the... Sue Donovan, about six months ago, told me that, well, the city made a mistake and you're just going to have to change the sign. You know, I told her, I said, well, I've already spent the money. It's not fair. It's not right. Well, you're just going to have to do it. I mean, I got a permit from the city. It was legal when I did it. This is undue hardship to, to limit to me to 24 square feet and then let the billboards have it full-size. If you're going to hold me to eight seconds, at least let me have what I want. But still, there again, I just want the rules that we had six months ago. We show here several different videos, you know, and you, you look at LED signs and, and signs in different directions. Every sign you see on here is an illegal sign, according to Sue. Basically, her idea of a video is anything that changes more than eight seconds. Well, you got to get rid of the lying. But all these signs at the Iowa Event Center are not holding eight seconds. They're all illegal, every single one of them. There's signs at the fairgrounds that are illegal. There's signs on the interstate that you'll see up here that are illegal. The high schools has an illegal sign. They're just terribly offensive if you watch the video. There, there's not a legal sign on this video. You count the seconds between the changes, every one of those is changing less than eight seconds. If you watch, Prairie Meadows has got dice rolling up on this. This is a sign that you guys, I think, can control. I'm not sure. But there again, it's signs, it's, that's over 24 square feet and it's still, watch, here comes the dice. That's running now. I mean, that's, that's just not, you know, to do all this, what are we fighting? Why are we doing this? Try hard not to put us with the, with the billboards. You need to really separate it. When people come up and complain, or they complain in LED, they're thinking video. This is one on Beaverdale. It's closed. That, that thing is, is 40, 42 square feet. It's twice, twice, two and a half times the size of mine. You know, we got street signs. This is an arrow scooting over. That's an illegal video, according to Sue. I understand the crosswalk sign was an illegal video. It's changing, stop, stop, you know, you get five seconds, four seconds, three seconds, two seconds. And you standing up here and you think, man, he's lost it, because he's comparing this, okay? No crosswalk sign. It takes 15 of those to get to my sign, that size. 15, 15 times. For me to compare it to a billboard, I'm sorry, just one more second. For that, to compare that to a billboard, it takes 32 times of my sign to compare it to a billboard. To put me in the same category as the billboards is not, is just not right.
All right. Anybody have questions?
Mark, I talked to you earlier today. I went out by and looked at your sign and you're right, your building sits down lower. You've got to have a sign there for them to know where you're at. And so I think you have a real reason there.
And I did fight it. I, I did it back in November and I lost. And that was the ruling, was Sue's definition of a video was eight seconds. That's where she's at. And all I'm asking is they'll go, we need to take another look at this and really evaluate where we're at and maybe that they did make a mistake.
Thanks for coming down.
Mayor, can I have just one quick second on a different subject?
Anybody have a problem with a new subject?
My son's graduating today and he's got a ceremony, so I'm going to sneak out. And I know there's another agenda that I wanted to talk on, but I live on the south side and we need more ambulances down there. And I just ask not to play politics with that. And I talked to two different firefighters and basically the new guys are all going down to the new station because nobody else wants to work it. And if they're on for 12 hours, if they can staff it for 12 hours, they have the staff because they're on 24 hours is a shot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Hello, Mike Camper, 8201 38th Street. I live in the Beaverdale area. I'm actually not here to talk about streetscape, sort of. My two comments, one related to the billboards, and just in general, I think this is a great topic. Long time coming. And when I hear about with the billboards and that the credits, you know, electronic signs go in one neighborhood, but the credits could go toward taking a sign down in another neighborhood, it just gives me a little bit of pause because we've just spent six years trying to work on a streetscape project to increase our commercial viability, but making it a softer visual impact in the neighborhood. And potentially, depending on how things go, we could end up with more billboards going down Beaver Avenue and look similar to what is in Merle Hay. And I think it's, it seems like one neighborhood or one street is getting a benefit at the detriment of another. So, you know, to, to put the credits into the same corridor just seems to make sense. And just kind of as a visual, I drove down to Ankeny, or up to Ankeny, however you wanna look at it, for a graduation ceremony, and I literally think there was more billboards on Merle Hay Road than there were from time I got to Highway 80 to Ankeny, just kinda counting. It just seemed like there was more on Merle Hay than there was that rest of that trip. In terms of the monument sign idea or citywide, I think it's a great idea, as I forget the gentleman's name, a couple in front of me that had the video of all the different signs. Basically, there's a million different signs out there. And from my years on the BNA board, we've had numerous occasions where there was a sign variance that was going to the zoning board of adjustments. And if we could kind of figure out something to kind of, you know, centralize it or kind of give a more general term and remove the 50 million thousand different versions of a sign into a smaller subset, that would make things a lot easier, I think, from a compliance standpoint, a variance standpoint, and just an aesthetic standpoint. How you go about doing that, I'm, that's, you know, I think of a million and one reasons or ways, but you know, you can start off with, if you're getting into new development, TIF districts, whatever, monument signs. You can go down to some of the suburbs, and that's what they have. Ankeny, same thing. Some brand-new construction, monument signs. And I also recognize that monument signs, depending on the footprint of the business establishment parking lot and spacing and stuff, a monument sign may not work. So a pole sign, great. I just know from my past experience on, on the board that, you know, we, in our neighborhood, we try to have the external lit signs on the face of the buildings, and it's just, you know, aesthetically more pleasing and trying to centralize how the designs of street signs we have in our neighborhood. That's it.
Mike, thank you. Anybody have a question? Mike?
Thank you for letting me toss, Mike.
You bet. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Greg Johansson. I live at 3650 Grand Avenue in West Des Moines. I own four businesses in Des Moines. Three of them are Medica Cap pharmacies, and the fourth is Ward Eastside Pharmacy. Three of the pharmacies currently have LED signs, two of which are mounted on monuments. One is on a pole sign. And then at Ward Eastside Pharmacy, we have a pole sign. So that's what I wanted to speak about a little bit more tonight, was the pole side side of the issue. I'm concerned that if, and the pharmacy that has a pole sign now besides Ward is on East 14th Street, which is an underserved area, if I were to lose that pole sign, my understanding is that we wouldn't be able to replace it, that we'd have to come back with a monument. And that's just what I wanted to speak to tonight, that it would be somewhat disadvantage to us to have to replace the pole sign with a monument sign. And thanks for your listening tonight.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
What's the addresses of your pharmacies?
Oh, gosh. Ward Eastside Pharmacy is at 2501 East Walnut. Easton Boulevard is at 2527 Easton Boulevard. East 14th Street is at 1300 East 14th Street. And the Beaverdale Medica Cap is something like...
2600, probably.
I was thinking 3900.
Yeah, 2000.
Beaverdale.
On Beaver.
That's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Cooper. I'm with Fairground Neighborhood Association. The reason I'm here tonight is because I wanna support our small businesses in the neighborhood to keep their pole signs. If they lose it in a storm, it's, I don't want them to have to take that down, to put up something different, because it really impacts them financially. So we really would appreciate if you would consider not doing anything to their little signs. I mean, the big billboards, well, those are really bright, and they're more distracting than those little signs are, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Sharon.
Uh-huh.
92040 Third Street.
Do you wanna give us your name?
Elizabeth Saunders. Hello, my name is Elizabeth Saunders, and I do not appreciate the billboard up by my school, Hubble Elementary. My classroom faces the billboard, along with many other classes. We could see the old billboard clearly, and we can see the new one, too. However, this one is more distracting. Our class is very easily distracted, and so are many other classrooms. We all turn our heads when someone walks in the door, and a bright flashing sign isn't any better. I am also concerned on the safety of our students. High school drivers constantly drive past our school, and then they see a bright flashing billboard, they might swerve or drive through a red light when a student is crossing. Billboards are made to get your attention, but when you are near a school, your attention needs to be on the road. I am also a member of the Hubble Safety Patrol. One of the places that we help kids cross is at the freeway. I occasionally catch myself looking at the billboard, and I'm pretty sure other members do, too. Our attention should be on the road, and if it's not, we could make a mistake that could hurt someone. The billboard is visible to all of the other main student-crossing zones. I don't like having to watch ads about Des Moines' most-wanted criminal, and I don't think first graders do either. From my understanding, there's no regulation on the ads that go up. Last, but definitely not least, I enjoy looking outside and just taking in Des Moines' beauty every now and then. The billboard ruins that and makes it hard to make our neighborhood look the best that it can be. Please don't let students get hurt, and let us enjoy our school day free from distractions. Distract.
Elizabeth, thank you very much.
How old are you?
Ten.
Excellent job.
Excellent. You should help that attorney that first spoke.
I didn't say it.
Oh, my.
My name's Kathleen Loder, and I am a, well, almost. I'm in second grade, and my school is also Hubble. And the thing about the poster board, to me, it really bothers me because when I'm at school trying to read a new library book that I really like, it's kind of hard to concentrate because most of the seats are faced near the windows, which I don't mind that, but then the billboard shines lights, and it's hard to concentrate on a book or work.
Kathleen, thank you very much.
Hi there. I'm Megan Brown. I'm from 62648th Street in Des Moines, and I come here on behalf of the Hubble Elementary School PTA today. I think I've exchanged emails with several of you, and I thank you for your time. I will keep this brief because Ms. Saunders and Ms. Loder were very eloquent on the points that I had wanted to make anyway. But as somebody observing the digital billboard situation around the city, my main concerns are about safety, certainly. A recent study from the Michigan Department of Transportation shows that there are more accidents near digital billboards than anywhere else, and I would be glad to forward you that information separately. I'm not gonna go into all the statistics right now. As Jason Polian put it before, there is a time and a place for signage. I am very sympathetic to the needs of small businesses. I understand their need to advertise, especially when they're in kind of rough spots and they don't necessarily have the opportunity to get their message out there. This I understand. But there is no reason to have a gigantic billboard less than 500 feet from a school building at a very busy intersection. I don't think there's anything we can do about the billboard that's already there in front of the playhouse, but you bet I wish that we could do something about it. And frankly, I am surprised that we haven't yet heard from anybody at the Roosevelt Streetscape Project, because they are working very hard and have been for many years to try to beautify that corridor, and the billboard, quite frankly, ruins it. It's, it just blights the whole landscape there. So I appreciate your time and attention to this effort, and I hope that you'll vote in favor of tightening some regulations around Des Moines. Thanks for your time.
Megan, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Randy Travis. I'm here on behalf of Travis Audio Video. We purchased a 16-square-foot electronic sign approximately 10 years ago. And my father stood before this council then for the right to display a sign that would promote a locally-owned business that has operated in Des Moines for over 64 years. And it was an ordeal for him then, that he, he worked hard to do that. And I don't wanna see his efforts go to waste. We have observed and have complied with many sort of city ordinances and laws to be a good citizens, and we will continue to do so. We have strived to maintain a well-grown landscape and orderly storefront. Our sign was a major financial investment, was designed to give potential customers a description incentive to do business with us. To enact a new law like the one proposed would greatly diminish our ability to do that. It is not nearly big enough to give the information that we currently display. In fact, I, in my opinion, it would become more of a distraction as lettering, and message would be smaller and more difficult to read for passing motorists. And in fact, in the 15, or in the 10 years that we've had that sign, we have not had one accident or any type of accident like that in front of the building because of our sign. We had to comply with size limitation, brightness, how far from the road the sign sat, and feel like, I feel a little bit like the rules are being changed on us here down the road, and would like to see some resolution that would enable us to keep that sign and be able to use it the way that we designed it and bought it and intended for it to be used and the way that the city council at that time said go for it. And that would be a good thing. So I'd like the city council to do everything possible and reasonable to encourage and promote business, and particularly small businesses in Des Moines. And that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Randy, thanks.
You're all eligible for the discount now.
Brian Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive. Here as an individual, but also as the president of the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association. Early on, our neighborhood took a vote. The Merle Hay Neighborhood Association had brought before their resolution, and we signed onto it. We believed in what they were trying to do. And to take us back to what was trying to be done, if we can have it on the overhead. The resolution was about power lines and possibly getting them put underground. Pole signs and billboards. So we looked at these three and how they affected the neighborhoods and what we didn't want in the long run. We didn't talk about digital signs, 24-square-foot and smaller, because they weren't part of this. They had very little impact on us. We didn't discuss them, didn't think about them. That was just the way it was. This was, this was something that was brought on by staff that they added, added to this, and I never thought it would be put together, but it turned out it's like the pawn shops and the payday lenders. And it's put together in that they're all of the same type. So that's where we are. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that there's gonna be some other discussions and, and talk. I remember when the Travis family decided that they wanted this sign, digital sign, and we worked hard to get it. And the city made some accommodations, and they got it. And RM, it took a lot of money, you know, for him to be able to do this. But in looking at other things, sometimes it seems the city of Des Moines, we tend to settle, or we're told we should settle. You know, we're Des Moines. We've heard this several times. Well, you're Des Moines, why should you expect this? So we see facades go up that are stucco instead of brick or things like that. And I don't think we should settle. We are Des Moines. We're not Sioux City, Davenport, or any of the others. We are Des Moines. We are special. So we look to the suburbs and other cities in Des Moines. I don't think we should. We should set the bar high. We are Des Moines, and that's a big deal. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Brian.
I'm one of the owners of Eagle Sign Company here in Des Moines, 5130 Park Avenue. I know that it was mentioned a study about accidents as far as billboards are concerned. There's also a study out as far as on-premise signs are concerned, that Texas A&amp;M had put out in cooperation with some highway associations across the country, and they'd studied, I believe it was 135 different on-premise, you know, brick-and-mortar building, you know, big brick-and-mortar locations. And they found that there is a negligible difference as far as safety concerns go. There's really no difference in before and after the accidents. So distraction isn't a huge thing for these smaller businesses who want to have a little more freedom with their signs versus where the billboards are at. So that's just one more, you know, reason I think that we should be differentiating between the two. I think another, you know, aspect of this that we're not really looking at would be gas changer signs. Come and Go, for instance, has, you know, the fuel price changers, those are pretty static. They only change when fuel prices change, which is, you know, at most, I'd say maybe two or three times a day, usually once a day, once every other day. You know, there's, there's several locations where they are along highways, and the average fuel price changer sign that we put up is 30 square feet, which would not fall under the new restrictions where we're talking about 24 square feet and smaller for all LED signage. Along the highways, we put up some that are as large as 240 square feet. If you're looking at a sign along a highway and you need somebody to see what the price of gas is as you're driving down the interstate, you're not gonna see a 24-square-foot sign. And in relation to that, you know, as far as the monument signs go, that's kind of the same feeling I've got. If you've got a business that's along a highway or a major thoroughfare through town, which, I mean, there's, we're Des Moines. We got 235, we got 3580, there's, there's a lot of that. You're not gonna be able to see a sign that even if you go to the Board of Adjustments and get it up to the 22 and a half feet max allow height, you're not gonna be able to see that from the highway. Just as a, for instance, this is in Urbandale, but the Bob Brown sign at Douglas. That sign is on top of a hill, and it's 50 feet tall. If you go down to the actual business location, the one down there is 30 feet tall, and you would not be able to see that from the highway unless you turn your head at the exact right moment as you're passing it. You wouldn't know to get off there. You know, the same applies for gas stations. How many truckers are driving through town and go, "Oh, there's a gas station sign. I need to get off here." They're not gonna be able to see those. And as far as changing to monument signs, you know, I have no problem building monument signs. I build them all the time. I think the structure of Des Moines and the appearance of Des Moines is different than that of the suburbs. You know, the suburbs have a lot more green spaces. The power lines aren't there. Can I make one more suggestion that has not been made yet?
Maria?
Okay. You know, as far as pole signs not looking aesthetically pleasing, you know, a cheaper option would be to put pole covers on some of these signs. It's a, it's a way that for most of the time, $1,000 or less, you can make some of these pole signs look a lot better. The brick that we're, is going to be required for the monument signs. I've seen anywhere $6,000, up to $20,000 in additional costs that that will add to businesses. And if you're going to go to monument signs, I might recommend not only requiring brick, possibly a foam base that looks like brick is a lot less expensive, or even just an aluminal, aluminum covering around the sign is cheaper yet. So there's some options that would be more aesthetically pleasing, but more doable for the businesses.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Jessica? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Nagel, I'm the president of Eagle Sign Company here in Des Moines. I'm gonna make this very brief. I would support carrying us on to a second and third reading, and I would love to participate in any discussions that would be set up to talk about anything that could be done to make everybody happy or a compromise of such a...
In relation to the smaller signs.
In relation to the smaller signs. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, County, members of the council. My name is Mel Pins. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue, president of the Somerset Neighborhood Association, and here in that capacity this evening... And here in that capacity this evening, I'm here primarily to speak regarding item number 40 and our neighborhood's support for an ordinance for the freestanding sign overlay district to prohibit use of pole signs and to require monument-type signs for new development. For those of you that have been on the council for a long time, some of you have, and those of you that are brand-new, if you've talked to your neighborhoods, which I know you all do, you know that one of the biggest things we all have is increasing the visual appearance, the viability, and the overall character of our commercial corridors. Some of them might be crime, some of them might be public works issues, but every neighborhood association that I know wants to work on improving the look of our commercial corridors. And whether that's green space, site planning, green setbacks, or used car overlay district, the attorney that spoke first did a really great job when he was on the council, working with all of you to start improving our commercial corridors. And this is just another step. This really isn't a new issue. The ordinance that you're discussing and all the people here tonight, this has kind of come to a head, but this has been around for a while. When we look at pole signs and the history of them, and we look at the regulatory history, we didn't used to have any. A lot of the pole signs we have today in certain parts of this city have been there for over 60 years. When Des Moines annexed areas that came in from Polk County, Polk County's regulations were based on highways, having a motel out in the middle of nowhere. Well, we've grown around that now. While the city's adopted ordinances over the last 40 years to address that, we kind of have this mismatch. As somebody said, it's a signage run amok. When I was a kid, I used to read the Mad, the paperback Mad magazines, and I always made fun of Madison Avenue and advertising and, and how we do our commercialization. And one of their favorite things to lampoon was how we do advertising on, on motorways. And unfortunately, that's a little bit of what I see. Some of it is stuff that's been around for decades, but within the last five years, there was a, Hardee's built at 1300 East Euclid, very nice store, right south of where Eastgate used to be. And they had a 35-foot-tall pole sign. And I asked city staff, well, do they need a variance for that? Oh, no. That's a highway-oriented district. Well, I can't imagine Ma and Pa Kettle on Highway 6 trying to figure out how to find a restaurant that they need a 30-foot-tall pole sign. I could maybe understand if you're near an exit off a limited-access highway, you know, if I'm cruising through Kansas City, I need to know where that QuickTrip is to get that cheap Missouri gas. But when I'm up here in Des Moines and I'm driving on a commercial corridor, I think we can find businesses if we bring our signs down closer to ground level. Stop at a Dunkin' Donuts in Des Moines. The one on Southeast 14th is plenty busy, and they have a monument sign. I think the reason they do is because of tax abatement, but I'd like to see everybody have that. Just in summary, quick, many say that we're too restrictive in Des Moines on our sign ordinances. While the suburbs aren't having a problem with it at all. They're growing, they have attractive commercial districts, and when it comes to quality redevelopment, I'm afraid that we need to do catching up on our ordinances. If not, we're going to be left behind. Thank you.
Thanks, Mel.
Hello, Jeff Nicholson, PMP Small Engines, 2715 East University. That's a picture of our location there. You can see our 24-square-foot LED sign there. It's kind of dark, but in the background, that is a digital sign, one of clear channels within 100 feet of us. And we're comparing, we've got both of them signs in the same category. We're asking that you would please separate those out and give us some relief. I'm one of the ones who, I bought mine two years ago. It was a very significant expense. It does bring in business. It does catch the eye. I am concerned about the eight-second rule, but I'm also concerned about what, what animation is, what video is. It's very undefined. And if you see that flag, American flag that's up there, which I like to put on our sign, it actually moves. It wa, it looks like a flag waving in the wind. And even that will be considered video. And that's the least of my concerns. That's just a neat thing to put up there, especially with Memorial Weekend and Veterans' Day. But that's something that I can't do if the rules change. So another concern of mine is the pole sign issue. I'm looking at expanding within the next two years. We're bursting at the seams. But if there's code change and if I have to go to site planning and change my site plan, according to the way that the code is written now, I've got to do a monument sign. And that's a significant expense, and just the expansion enough is going to be risky, to say the least. So I'm asking for your consideration on this and to separate us out. And also, the pole signs, I know they, the monument signs work well in some areas. I'm not sure with the way traffic comes and goes, where we've got streets on both sides of us. I think that's going to block the ability to view as you're trying to cross-traffic there as well. So I'm not sure that the monument's the answer in all areas. I know there's areas where it works, I know it can be done there, but I ask that you not paint with too wide of a brush in that area as well. And I thank you for your time.
Jeff, what's the address of your business again?
2715 East University. And one other point, Sharon Cooper was here from Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association. I did meet with her, I requested that we could get in front of them. I appreciate her coming down here. And, and our neighborhood supports us. Most of the neighborhoods that are talking, well, all of them, nobody has an issue with our 24-square-foot and under on-premise signs. I haven't heard one yet tonight. So thank you for your time.
Jeff, on your pole sign, do you have display on both sides of that sign?
It is. It's a two-sided sign, and it can be viewed from either direction.
Well, as wide as university is, you almost have to have it up near, so those going to the west, they'd be able to see it.
Yeah, it would be really hard to see if it was any shorter than that. So, and without it changing, with that huge clear-channel sign in the background, you're going to miss me. You're just not going to catch it. So.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Steve Britton. I'm with the Cozy Cafe on 14th and Army Post Road. About six months ago, we purchased a sign. It's three foot on one side of the building and three foot on the other side. It's only 12 inches wide or tall. It scrolls. The sign is small enough that you can't see it from the road unless you're sitting at the light. When you sit at the light, you have, you're sitting at the light, it's waiting for it to change, it gives you something to do besides read your phone. And I think it, it really has certainly impacted our business. It's a small business. This is the third or fourth restaurant that's been there in the last, I don't know, four or five years. We kept a number of the employees that were there at the previous restaurant. We'd like to keep the employees that we have for the future. And we believe that with the uptick in business we've seen in the last six months since we put the sign up, that it's, it's a viable part of our business. We also believe that, you know, when we bought this sign, we realized what the, what the rules and regulations were, and we did get a certificate of, I can't remember what the exact name it was, from the city saying it was okay, and we'd like to be able to have that honored. So if you do decide to change the rules, which we hope you don't, we'd like to be grandfathered in. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Steve.
I'm Joanne Hanover. I live at 1406 Merle Hay Road, which is about two and a half miles from the area we're talking about. I'm mostly interested in improving the aesthetics of the Merle Hay, Douglas, and Hickman area. Not putting anybody down or putting anybody up. I just want that. People that have lived in that area for years now can't have their shades up or their, what do they call them, black hot, blackout drapes? It's what they have to have in the back part of their yard. The lights, even at night, they have to go to bed with all that stuff closed. Merle Hay would be 58 if it had a number. And the people on 57th and 59th suffer from that. And that's what I'm trying to get across. They're already a problem. They have security lights out there all night. And that, those things weren't there when those older people moved into those houses years ago. You know? Well, I'll skip this because I don't want to make clear channel mad at me. You know, this is not just a issue for Merle Hay Road. You go out East 14th, which I did, couldn't find the restaurant for the signs, honest. And I was embarrassed. I wasn't going to tell anybody. I was meeting a group, and when I got in there, two guys said they missed the restaurant because they couldn't see it. Now, that's terrible. So the next time I went out there, I tried to count. It's not easy to drive on East 14th and count billboards. So I counted 21 from the bridge by the Capitol out to Army Post, and there, and there were 21 billboards. Now, that's only one side. There, I don't know if they're two-sided because I couldn't turn around to look. But if that's true, they have 42. I got one more illustration. I had taken my son out to the airport, and on the way back, I was thinking how beautiful Fleur Drive was. I mean, it's been that way, what, about eight or 10 years now, at least? Until I got to Bell, and there are three, all of a sudden, after looking at all this attractive stuff, there's three billboards at the corner of Bell Avenue and Fleur Hadrol in an area just about this big. I don't know how they got by with that, but see, they, they get to leave them there because they don't change the rules. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Joanne.
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur, speaking now on behalf of Des Moines Neighbors. The staff recommendation and what you see here is quite a bit off-base from the discussion that's been had for the last four or five months in regard to this whole issue of signage and particularly in the area of the billboards. As we've talked about at Des Moines Neighbors, and we've had presentations discussing probably at least three different meetings at Des Moines Neighbors, the thing that came up the most during that whole time was billboards. It was not the 24-square-foot signs, it was billboards. That was a concern that kept getting shown all the time by it. And you've heard ample opportunity and discussion about billboards, so I'm not going to go into it, to accept, to say that there are two main issues in relationship to the, to the overage of signage. One is the area of the aesthetics or quality of life, and you've heard a lot about that from the standpoint of, of the, of the Merle Hay area. But also, even more importantly, to what I have heard, is the issue of public safety. See, part of the problem with billboards particularly, but also with video signs, videos that actually can show a movie on it, not videos that scroll, but ones that continually showing new things, is that the more successful the sign is, the more it is a hamperance to public safety in the city of Des Moines. If you're driving down a road and you see one of these, a video going on, or you see something in this huge billboard, and it's really interesting, guess what? You want to keep watching it. You want to keep watching it. The success of those is actually what creates the public safety issues that we've been talking about. The two young ladies that came up amply described that in the issue of public safety. And if we're going to argue anything about signs, we've got to look at first this issue of public safety. How is it affecting the people who are driving? And, and I don't think it's probably as bad as cellphones, but I'll bet you at times it's getting very close to the issue of people using cellphones. Billboards were originally designed to be on highways. And then they kept slipping closer and closer as the city went farther and farther out. More billboards came in within the city limits, and then they figured out, wait a minute, there's a, there's a huge number of people here, let's get more billboards out. I think that we need to have the stamina and the excitement of looking at ways that we can get rid of billboards out of the city of Des Moines. Other municipalities have done it. Other states have done it. Under some relaxed home rules here in Des Moines and in Iowa, I believe that we can look at it. No, it's not going to happen tomorrow. But we could look at a process and develop a kind of an agreement where we armatize the value of the sign over a certain amount of time, and after that certain amount of time, then that billboard has to go down. We could look at the same thing from the standpoint of some of the other ones, and the pole signs as well. Look at that grandfathered ones in there, but then look at a process of time that says, hey, after 5, 10, 10, 15, 20, it doesn't matter, whatever, you can take the actual use of that sign out, the way they can do it with their taxes, then they're not allowed in perpetuality of having those signs out there. If we want to take control of our city, and particularly in the area of billboard signs, which to me is the most egregious of the whole area, is we need to do that, look at it from a time stance, and go ahead, after a certain amount of time, the sign comes down. And I think that's what best will serve it. And finally, one of the things I've heard time and time again, may I finish? One of the times I've had time and time again is that what we are proposing today is actually totally unfair to the small businesses in the city of Des Moines. Totally unfair to them. The billboards love it because you take down those signs, guess what you get to see? More billboards. And so I can see why they're really happy with this particular legislation. But it's our small businesses, the ones who actually are simply putting a sign at their location to advertise they are right here, those are the ones that we should be taking care of in this whole thing. And so I would recommend that the legislation that you have right now is probably totally inadequate. I think it was done in a rush because we felt it had to be done in a rush. We need to sit back, take a better look at it, and look at a serious, ongoing effect, take away some of the visual clutter, and to be able to be fair in the process. Not just honoring the large billboards, but also taking care of our small businesses, who do, by the way, pay property taxes on their property. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
Marilyn Nizzi, 3501 59th Street. I'm also a Merle Hay Neighborhood Association board member. I've lived at my residence since 1978. I live one block west of Merle Hay Road. Jason showed you a picture, actually is my backyard that has the billboard in it. That is on the right side of my backyard. I also have one on the left side. So I look at that 24/7. When I go to the end of the street and look west, there are two more billboards. So, and then looking out my north window, I see, have a full view of an electronic billboard. I realize we do need to back our small businesses. We try to be good stewards. We're there 24/7. We try to report things that go on in the night. So we are there to back our businesses. But I also kind of like to know who looks at all these signs. I'm too busy looking at the traffic, so I don't actually look at all these signs. There's just too many of them. And also, I wonder in 10 years, where are we going to be with the new electronic things and new ways of communication? Are these going to be all outdated then? So I just ask that everybody come together and try to improve on the landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a last speaker?
Well, I'm Drew Belcher. I'm here on behalf of Aztec Motors, 908 Southeast 14th Street. We got our sign put in about three years ago. And the car business is always about being different, standing out, because we all know there's a lot of car lots out there. The sign has helped us a lot. It gives a lot of eyeball to our lot, plus it makes us stand out. We would appreciate being able to keep our sign and anything you guys can help us out with. Thank you.
You have one more? Are you, speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been up here twice, talking to the zoning commission and you also. My name's Alvin Martindale, and I represent the Fraternal Order of Eagles. My name's Alvin Martindale, and I represent the Fraternal Order of Eagles out on 6567 Bloomfield Road. We are a non-charity, nonprofit organization that we raise money for charities. Again, we have nine charities. So far this past year, we've raised, so far this year, we've raised $12,844. Our problem is with the new thing, we do have a monument sign. The problem is, we only have a 14-foot square sign. We can't get our functions in there to draw our people in to raise our money for our charities. So, if you can reconsider this eight-second rule and the scrolling of the text, we don't have no signs, nothing but text coming down all the time. If you could look at that, you're also going to have to reconsider, some of the schools has got these little small signs, our Air National Guard has these small signs, so, and I don't know if they include Wells Fargo's sign up there or what, but I'm just asking you to look at these small signs for these small business people and our organizations. So, take that into consideration. Thank you.
Alan, thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming down. I know there's a lot of people in the audience that didn't speak, that have a position. We've heard from 22 speakers this evening and with a wide variety of, of input. And as we vote, I think that what has been pointed out here very clearly is, I'm glad this is only the first reading, I think we need to scrutinize where this goes and how it goes and, and maybe seek a little more input. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that's kind of how I'm working on. I, we have watched planning and zoning and, and lots of others try to work with this billboard sign issue for years. It is not an easy issue, but I think some of our youngest speakers here today pointed out some of the problems that we have with placement and rules and regulations around it. So, I, I want to thank everybody for their input. And I'll start over here with Mr. Gray. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I've got just a couple. You know, as Merle Hay Road, and we, I'm glad we had as many people come as, as they did, and some didn't even speak, but, you know, I've said this before and it just rings through after we heard everybody talk, is that we are the poster child of signs run amok. One of the things that you have to take a look at to really get a good comparison of where we're at here in the city of Des Moines, is to take Merle Hay Road north and go across the interstate and see the drastic change in signage right there. Do you want to see another change? We can go to, take Douglas west of Merle Hay Road. Soon as you hit Urban Dale, bang, over and done, another change. Same, same thing with Hickman. You take Hickman west past Merle Hay, bang, it changes. Our, our suburban neighbors have done a great job of throttling the signs down. Their businesses seem to be thriving. The residents are happy with it. I think what we've got here, right within our neighborhoods, is that we have not taken care of our own business. I think we fell a little bit behind the, the scenes here when digital started to take over, over the static billboards. That's really an issue. One of the things that I, I look at when I see all this out here is that we are doing the best that we possibly can to bring people into the core of the city, to bring people downtown. But we can't even keep our, our corridors open and clutter-free to bring that. It's like having a great jewel there and having a front yard that hasn't been mowed in three months, cars up on jacks. You know, you can't get past the, the corridor to, to see what you really have in your home. I, I, these are the kind of frustrating things I, I've seen. And I'd like to say, I came before City Council on the other side here 10 years ago. So, I, this is then something that we've been working on throughout the years. This is not any rushed job. As you heard through most of the people here, the quality of life is being impinged upon. You know, I do not, I mean, I'm not that far away from Merle Hay and Hickman, but I did get a letter from a lady that's three blocks away that had to have that flashing light on Hickman and Merle Hay Road flashing in her bedroom. That's not a good thing. That doesn't give me a good quality of life. And in her instance, she had the house before the digital billboard went in. So, it's not like if I moved next to a railroad track or I moved next to the airport and I knew what I was getting into, things changed on them. Also, like I say, when you compare the suburbs, I, I always go back to the, the big box stores or any of the chain stores. When you look out there, they have a, a model that they want to follow, and they follow it over in the suburbs. But then they come to Des Moines, just like Mel said, well, you can have a 35-foot sign or you can have a 17-foot sign. That's not a good way of leading in there to get rid of the visual clutter that we've got. So, we've, we've got to get this going in the right, right thing. We, and there's no villains here. You know, like I think Jason pointed out, what we're trying to do is, we, we're the villains. We are the ones that have not kept up with the times. We need to move forward. We need to start to enact something. And I believe that if we push this down the road, we're just putting together a conduit for, for failure. We don't need to be doing that. We've got a great plan started here. Finally, I have said this all along, you know, we're, we're looking, as I said, out to the suburbs to see what's going on here. We don't need to be followers. We need to be the leaders here. We need to set the standards that make our core city, that make our neighborhoods a great place to live. And I think we've got a good start here. I've got some issues, I, I'm, Brian Meyer, I hardly ever would have acquiesced, but, you know, after hearing a lot of the, the business owners complain about the signs and Councilman Godo and I, we compared, I've got two in my neighborhood. Thank you, Randy, the one of them is yours, and I will take it at that discount. And, and Joe, I-
I have 12. Out of the speakers that came up.
So, there's a little disparity there. I believe we need to do something. I've got an idea of what we probably can do, but I think it follows along the line that you're wanting to do. Let's take the 24-square-foot billboards and treat them just a little bit differently. We need to have a little bit more discussion on that. But the meat of the matter that we've got here, we've got the billboards. I have not gotten, I don't think anybody here has gotten any support for keeping the billboards at the way they are and the poll signs. I think we've got a good start here. I'd like to, I'm not going to make a motion here in a little bit, but I'd rather hear what the rest of the council's got to say. But I believe we've got something going good here. The, the, the small business signs, we need to take a look at and probably judge that in a, in a probably more thoughtful manner. But I think we've got a good start here. I want to keep going with this. This is a great start. This is something I've been looking forward to for, for all the years that I've been on the Board of Adjustment and now on this side. It's a, it's a great feeling to be here. So, I'll be willing to make a motion after we make a round here as far as, I think this is, I, I love what, what we've got here, so.
Mr. Moore, any thoughts?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
I think out of 22 speakers, I don't recall one getting up there and saying they wanted billboards, let alone digital billboards. In fact, we heard the downside to digital billboards. I know in the mid-'90s, the City Council approved the university beautification, East University beautification. And I sat through many charrettes with Tom Dunbar on the beautification of East University and what rose to the top every time were the billboards. We now have more billboards, not less. And I know I've heard the mayor talk about when he was on planning and zoning, they discussed billboards. I don't know if we can separate the two or not. I think we should see if we can from the, the poll signs and the 24-foot square signs. I do believe there are some of those out there that should be grandfathered in. I've heard the statement in the past, didn't hear it tonight, but I've heard it in the past, that what's next? What change are they going to make next? And I think when the business owners invest in their signs and we're saying that's, it's good to go, it ought to be good to go as long as you've got that sign. I am going to support this vote tonight. And I hope that when it comes back in a couple of weeks, maybe there's some recommendations we can separate stuff out. Hopefully, we can. And I want to thank everybody that's come in here tonight. I think you've been listened to, both the neighborhood leaders and the business owners. And we'll do the best we can for you.
Well, it's evident that one size doesn't fit all. I think Brian Meyer had some good ideas to bring it back and look at these. We got people talking about poll signs, monument signs, a variety of signs, and a variety of reasons that some of the people want to get rid of them, other people want to keep them. So, I think it needs more study. I'll support the motion tonight, but I won't support the B part of 39. But I'm going to, hopefully, that we can come together and, and come up with an idea. We'll probably have to have more than one ordinance to address all these, but it's certainly that we can't settle for just one ordinance to, to oversee all of these, so.
Joe?
Well, a couple of comments from me. First off, as a small business owner, and I've went through this story 15 years ago when I remodeled my restaurant, I wanted to put a monument sign up. And the neighbors didn't want a monument sign, nor did the city, because the lights would shine in there. I'm in the middle of a residential area. So, that, that wouldn't work. So, I left the poll sign up. 15 years later, we're back to where now if my sign gets wrecked, I've got to do a monument sign. Now, we just need to be consistent with small business owners. The 24-square-foot signs, there's been, we had 22, 23 speakers, 12 of them are in my ward, the signs. And, you know, I, you know, I'm sympathetic to them. They're a small business owner. They've invested a lot of money. And, you, you know, that's a good form of advertising for them. And, you know, we need to be conscious of that. This is, this is part of their business and this is part of their, what they need to, what they've invested in for advertising. On the billboard side of it, again, as a small business owner, that is one thing that I do on a consistent basis. It's affordable and it gets a response. It, it truly does. I see a very uptick in my business when I put a billboard on Fleur Drive. I mean, it's, it's, no doubt works. You know, do I like it that it's shining in people's windows? Absolutely not. That is, you know, is, do I like that it's shining in her classroom? No, I don't. But we've got to find some type of happy medium that, that we can all live with from the business sense and from a neighborhood sense. And I think that we definitely are going to need more discussion about it. And I, you know, I, I said that before this, before this, I, you know, maybe, maybe we need to really discuss it at a workshop. I mean, we, all of us need to sit down and, and really talk about what we want to do and not rush what we're going to do. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's my point of it, you know, and we'll, we'll, we'll see how, we'll, we'll see how, going forward, what we're going to do.
Christine?
I want to thank everybody for their comments and their participation in this process because it does go back quite a long time. We've had several workshops on it. We've had a lot of neighborhood meetings and discussion. And I'm supportive of the overall ordinance. However, I think that we really need to carve out the component, the piece that deals with the smaller signs. Because as was said, one size doesn't fit all up here. And when I talk about the carve-out, let me just, I've made a list of some of the different comments that were made because I think it's important that we deal with this before it comes back for the second or third reading. If we're not able to deal with it, we have some other options available. But if this ordinance were to come back with this in it, I could not be supportive of it for that reason. Look at whether or not we grandfather in these signs that have already been built because of the significant investment that the small business owner has invested in those signs. And it's probably more problematic to me, and I'm concerned about those small businesses because they went in and got a permit. And then all of a sudden, they're told that it's not legal. It's not a legal issuance. And that's our fault. That's not the business owner's fault. And so, I don't think that they should be penalized and we have to figure out how to deal with that. Whether or not we amortize those signs in so that over a period of time, that needs to be looked at. I think the definition of video, there was a lot of discussion of video. What is a definition of video? And there may be a definition out there, but there's clearly a different interpretation when the people have come in to go through the permit process. The eight seconds versus less time needs to be looked at. I, you know, that was clearly obvious in some of the examples that were given tonight as to what was effective and not effective. The other, you know, the second and third reading, I don't know if it's doable to actually get that done, to have this addressed with all of the appropriate individuals. If not, does it make sense to take care of it in the comprehensive plan? Not even do anything with the 24-square-foot signs at this point, but have it addressed as a staff? And we've got a consultant coming in that's going to be working with staff on the comprehensive plan. I believe that the 24-square-foot signs, 24-inch square foot are really going to be a bigger issue and a bigger item that we need to address in the future. Because as you talked with staff, I think they told me today, we've had over 50 of these come in in the, in just the recent time, whereas there have been significantly less billboard requests. In fact, you've had a decrease. If you talk with Clear Channel, there's actually been a decrease in the number of billboards that they have had. So, I think that the smaller signs are going to be a much more significant issue for the community than the billboards. And we've talked about the investment that the small businesses have made. We can't forget the investment that Clear Channel has made. They've made a significant investment. You may not like it, but it's out there. They've made a significant investment. And it is important that we're sensitive to the investment and the role that they've played in the community. So, there has to be a balance. And we need to make sure that we do as much to get it right. And we don't do something that creates unintended consequences based upon action that we take here. So, those are my comments. And I, again, appreciate all of the, the input and the work that everybody's done to get us to this point.
Ms. Coleman, any thoughts?
A couple real quick. Right after we took action, Bill and the mayor put this on our agenda, I think in early April. Bill and I did a TV interview together and I said, you know, my, my biggest concern of the poll signs, it continues to be, close behind are all the utility wires and lines that are, that are overhead. I think those are the, the, the most disappointing things in town. But let me just offer a couple of quick comments to that regard. I, I support almost everything that's here. I think there's a couple of things that we've overreached on. And I think the number of speakers on a few issues at the edges, like the 24-foot and smaller signs, prove that there's consist, there's, there's a consensus on a lot of what we're talking about doing here. And, and I agree with it. I, I want to point out a couple of things. It, it shouldn't surprise anybody that it's controversial here. We've talked a lot about the Planning and Zoning Commission grappling with this, but the recommendation from them wasn't really overwhelming. We have 15 slots on the Planning and Zoning Commission. This got seven votes. Between absences and no votes, it wasn't overwhelming. And so, people have, at every level of this, wrestled with this to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And so, I think it's good that the council is as well. Let me also just point out, Rick and, and the, our corporate counsel, Jeff in particular, I was frustrated, this is a little side note, because this is the introductory line that the commissioners got about the council action. And quite frankly, I just don't think it's accurate. The commission, a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission advising that their meeting held May 1st, the following action was taken regarding the City Council-initiated request to amend the zoning text in Chapter 134 to regulate operational standards of electronic signs regardless of size. I don't think we said regardless of size. I don't, I think that was a non-issue in anything that was said before. And sometimes issues like that then get inertia. I agree that these probably make enforcement a little bit harder, but I'm not quite sure our ordinances should be viewed only from the standpoint of enforcement. We want our small businesses and neighborhoods to be successful. And, and I think we've overreached here. On the issue of billboards, I'm, I'm not an anti-billboard person, like a lot of people are at this table and in our community. I think we need to regulate them well. That's why over time I voted probably on five location, five occasions to make it tougher. Each time this has been before us, we've made it harder. I wish we were a suburb that had no billboards and all we were trying to do is talk about how not to let them in. That'd be pretty simple. The problem is, we all, including me, got elected when there were hundreds in town and they were legal when they were built and they could exist legally. So, it's much harder to find a path to get rid of them, and this has been a slow process. Like some people have said, we have less now than we had a couple of years ago, and we have less than we had many years ago. The number keeps reducing. In Merle Hay, as much of a problem as this is, as I understand the numbers, we started, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, we started with about 29 faces. If we have 26 now and, and three have been converted or taken down, roughly, right?
We've had two taken down.
Two taken down. Two taken down, so we, and we have 26 now, so we had 28. So in essence, had this ordinance been in place where they could convert and only use the credits in that corridor, 14 digital billboards would have still been allowed, 28 for 14. In this case, they've gotten a head start on it, so they are able to, I think, build 16, if they take them down and rebuild them. So we're still nibbling at the edges of this. You know, I, I support this, but it isn't, it isn't a sea change. It's like we've done every four or five years as we've addressed billboards. We've tried to clamp down a little bit more and find logical solutions to decreasing the number of them, and I think this is a good step, but it's going to take a long time before we have some kind of wholesale action to get rid of them in town. This is little bites. What we can do quickly is stop the pole signs, and I support that 100%. So I hope, if you're going to make a motion, Bill, you consider some of our thoughts as well.
The other, the other thing that I, is I listened to all the comments here, and especially in the audience. And it seems to me that we're talking about, whether it's the electronic displays and the multi-vision signs, or, you know, we're talking about freestanding signs. The things that seem to be a biggest concern are size, function, how they work, and the location. I loved listening to everybody, at least 19 folks had some really good informational stuff. To me, the most compelling speakers this evening were Elizabeth and Kathleen. And we need to look at location and the appropriateness of where these things are placed, because as they pointed out, the placement of that, that particular thing was wrong, and we tried to have a discussion around that a few months ago, and unfortunately, it went away and was erected. So it, it is concerning from an educational standpoint, and those two speakers spoke to that directly and touched my heart. So, thank you both. Bill, it's up to you.
Thank you. I just have one question, Rick. One of the things that we've heard is, is the small business signage. If we pass the first reading of this, and we're allowed to go to the second reading, can we have staff put something together for either an amortization schedule, or, like Christine says, roll it into the comprehensive plan for those signs 24-square-foot and smaller? I think Chris was right, that, you know, that wasn't my first intent in going through with this. I really wanted to make sure that we addressed the two key issues of the billboards and the pole signs. So if, if we can get that going to a second reading, and then we take a look at, at the small business owner's signs, I think everybody here is going to be a lot more comfortable making decisions.
Mr. Gray, council members, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a reasonable approach, if that's the direction the council wants to go. We can take that piece of the concern that you're talking about, and that can be looked at as part of the overall comp plan update, the zoning update. So you can sort of not deal with it now, but put that into the queue for a more thorough conversation as part of that process going forward.
Great. That's good to hear. So then, hearing that, I'd like to move 39A.
And I'm supportive of that, and so are you going to come back, and we'll know exactly what the final recommendation will be when we have the second reading? If it'll be in the comp plan, or if we're going to look at some other mechanism? You know, I would be comfortable having it in the comp plan, but if that's the direction we go, we just need to know, are we going to have a separate moratorium for additional signs during that period?
I think--
And you need to take care of this in the next 12 days.
In the next 12 days. So I'm going to try and answer, and I'm going to look back here at Phil and Mike and Larry. It seems to me that by the next meeting, Larry and company can address, in terms of the process going forward, exactly how they're going to do it. I don't think I ought to try to pontificate about that right now, but I think that by the next reading, they can outline for you how that process would be addressed, whether it would be done as a separate kind of consideration, or part of the comp plan, and when that would be taken up.
Okay.
So if that's, if that's not fair, guys, why just step up.
I appreciate pulling that out of it. Let me say for the record, the signs that are less than 24 feet are basically unregulated right now. I think even their attorney said that they could support some level of regulation, and I would rather probably not wait for the multi-months or a year that it'll take to do the comp plan review. I think even a placeholder of a simple ordinance with some restrictions would be helpful to the neighborhoods as, you know, so I'd rather not punt it too far, but maybe in the next two meetings, we can come back with just a, at least a placeholder of one that tightens it up a little bit.
That's fine.
I like that, too.
Joe, did you have a comment?
I just, you know, are we going to discuss at a workshop or during the next hearing about whether we grandfather them in, and how long we're going to grandfather them in, if that's what we intend to do, or how are we going to approach that? Because I think that we need to, we need to have a discussion among all of us what we want to do.
All right. I'd like the city attorney, who has been working on this in part, to give us a couple of thoughts.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mostly, I want to clarify for everyone, we can do whatever you want us to do. We're happy to do that. I don't think, however, and I want to make clear so that there's not a false perception, I don't think we can have a moratorium till the conclusion of the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Moratorium is an extremely short mechanism by which council can maintain the status quo, to do that for a year, if it takes that long to get the comp plan done. But I think that would have some serious legal infirmities, so I just want to make sure that's clear with everyone for how we move forward.
Okay.
Joe?
I'm still moving 39.
And 39A, correct?
Correct.
Got it.
They're looking at me because I haven't voted yet. Just to clarify, the intention is that we come back with a slightly amended ordinance that takes some of the text out on smaller signs, and maybe reinsert some placeholder language?
Or have a plan to deal with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it takes out the 24-square. This, what we're voting on is going to carve that portion of it out.
No.
No, you're voting on everything tonight, but with the understanding that when it comes back to the second reading, that we'll have a different plan.
Right. Slightly altered plan.
Okay.
I can, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's, that's what I wanted, because I'll support it tonight, so that it keeps moving forward.
Right.
But Mr. Meyer and his client need to know that we need to work on something, because it's going down the tracks.
Okay.
Seven, yes.
All right. That moves us to 40. Bill, do you have a proposal on that?
I'll move 40.
And 48?
I have to get my glasses on, CVA.
Freestanding overlay. Yeah. Seven, yes.
All right. Thank you all again, those of you who are here to discuss this, these multiple sign issues. Appreciate your input. Item 41, on the proposed amendments, the zoning ordinance to regulate the allowed location and operation of tobacco stores that sell alcoholic beverages off premises consumption. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by the legal department and requires six votes.
I'll move.
Is anybody here to speak to item 41?
I think there is one speaker. In favor.
Hi, my name is Joe DePape. I own a property, or I lease a property, rather, at 1800 University. We have a business there that has been in existence for 15 years, four years in this particular location. You've had a long night already, and I know that, and I don't want to bother you a lot. I thank you very much for letting me talk tonight. I just wanted to assure you that we're not a head shop. We run a very upscale business. We're not in the newspaper a lot, because we don't have any problems. And I just, again, want to thank you. Well, I'll tell you a little about our business, I guess, make you feel more comfortable. We have every employee that works for me go twice a year to the state-sponsored class about how to not sell to minors. We pay them to do that, and we want to make sure that's done. We've put in special computers that cost quite a bit of money, in order so that we can scan their cards as they come in, to make sure that they're of age. We know we're selling price-sensitive things, we're very conscious of that. We do our best to run a good, uptight business, and we have a chain of these stores across the state of Iowa, and we're pretty well-received in most cities. So I, like I said, thank you for giving me this time and for considering--
And you're supportive of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And I would like to have you be supportive of that also.
Absolutely. We like it, too.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Keller, 113 51st Street in Des Moines. And you guys have had a really long evening, so I would just like to thank the city's staff for taking the time to recognize that there really does need to be a comprehensive scheme that regulates tobacco stores and recognizes them as tobacco stores rather than liquor stores. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm sure staff has probably answered most of them. Hope you'll support this ordinance. The Plan and Zoning Commission did unanimously. And without any questions, I'll let you go.
Any questions?
I think we had a motion to move 41A and B.
I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, just because I think it clearly defines what, what we're doing here to separate it. I voted no on six, which is the sale of tobacco, period, but I think it's a good idea to clarify exactly what the relationship is here, so I'm going to vote for this, and appreciate our legal department for working on it and the support that our staff has had on it.
Seven, yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item 42, on a lease-purchase agreement for acquiring certain items or equipment consisting of five tandem axle dump trucks, one single axle crew cab dump truck, one G V W truck with an aerial platform lift, one tandem axle semi-tractor, and one rubber-tired loader not to exceed $1,200,000. Council Communication Number 14-240. A is authorization for additional action. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Move 42.
Close the hearing. We've got to move. Any discussion?
Seven, yes.
Item 43, on the issuance of general obligation bonds for fiscal year 2014-15 capital improvement budget and tax increment projects for the following. A, $3 million for urban renewal purposes. One is authorization for additional action. B is $50,000 for essential corporate purposes. Under that, one authorization for additional action. And that is it. Is there anybody here to speak on the issuance of those general obligation bonds?
I'll move 43A and B.
Okay.
A1, A, B, B1.
So A and one?
43A and A1, yes.
Okay, 43A and one, under that, this is, we're going to need a separate vote?
Seven, yes.
And now we need a motion for B and B1.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
43B and B1.
Seven, yes.
Item 44, on the intent to acquire 1422 Scott Avenue for the Southeast Agribusiness Urban Renewal Project. Council Communication Number 14-238. A is approving the agreement with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and B is approving the agreement with the Des Moines Metro Waste Agency, doing business as Metro Waste Authority regarding the disposal of waste from that project. Anybody here to speak on this item?
I will happily move 44A and B, please. And I can go over and vote for Coleman if we need to.
Six, yes.
My, my neighbor was inquiring about who the guy was in charge of the ward for, so you'll be getting a call.
Yeah. So I've had many since I sat here for that project or that property.
All right. 45, on the 2014 Sidewalk Replacement Program Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate designation of the lowest responsible bidder as MPAS Engineers PC. UMSG Scheit, President, $439,720. Council Communication Number 14-227. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody here to speak to that sidewalk replacement program? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move 45, 45A.
46, on the Fire Department Administration Parking Lot Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as PG Construction, Inc. Keith Purdy, President, $62,608.74. This item was continued from our May 5, 2014 agenda. Council Communication Number 14-234. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this item? Yes, sir?
Mayor of County, members of the council, Mel Penns, President of Somerset Neighborhood, 210 East Bundy. I'll make my comments brief here. I've reviewed the proposal here, and what was done on Devenant Avenue with building the new fire training center and station is awesome. It's really great to see the investment in the infrastructure. I like to see our fire department have what they need for good facilities, good equipment, good training. But one of the things that we've continued to struggle with as neighborhoods is the scope of service. The service that the fire department provides is a number one, but I know that they're stretched, I know that they're taxed, but I know, just like, just like a combat soldier, the men and women at the fire department will still carry out their mission, no matter how fatigued they are. If they come to your door, you think they're just there to help you. And I'm not sure how the money works on all this, but if you do approve this, I would like to see you continue to work to try to support keeping our fire department members where they can be stationed where they need to. It's been very confusing for me to try to keep track of who's been moved to what station, what paramedic unit is there, and how many people are on an engine. I don't claim to be the expert on that. I know there's some folks that have followed that closely. But I am concerned about how we do spend that money. I'd like to support our people as much as possible. Maybe this is from a different pot, I don't know. But I'd like to see you invest in any staffing as much as possible with the fire department if, if you can. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Let's go ahead and close the hearing. Comments from council members?
I have a few comments. This is in my ward. I've struggled with this project, probably, I think it was on the agenda, maybe, the first time I sat down here and I referred it back. As everyone knows, everyone sitting up here, we have a staffing problem. And I, and I've heard that this is too different-- that this is two different pots, but where do you draw the line where you trade public safety for a parking lot? Now, that, to me, there should be no question what we do. And if we're going to say it's a different pot, then I can think of six different parks that I would give $10,000 to, to put equipment in, that not even in my ward, all of them. So, I mean, I understand the chief has tried to work with us on a pilot program that he's set up to where, and Rick's been involved in that, and we've sat down. I feel the pilot program that is in effect is doomed to fail. And that's because we're going to put it in service when we have enough staff. We're not going to, it's going to be close to the other station, so how many calls it's going to get, it's unclear. Station number one is the medics running fifteen, twenty runs on a 24-hour period? I don't want to be number fifteen. I don't think any of us sitting here want to be number fifteen. You know, that's, you know, that, we need to look at that. We need to take a step back, prioritize what we're doing, and this just brings it to the forefront. I mean, this is something that we need to take a good look at. And I'm not comfortable with supporting this. I don't know if we, you know, I've wanted to sit down with everybody in a room. I guess legal says that's not possible for me to sit down with everybody in a room. So I don't know what type of, you know, can the mayor form a committee? Then we can all sit down and try to figure out what we can do. But there's a disconnect somewhere between the guys on the street and the chief and the department. And I don't think it's running like it should. When I, a month before I was elected, I have an emergency call at my restaurant, and it's 11 minutes before an ambulance gets here. That's a lot. That's a long time for an ambulance to come to somebody. Two weeks ago on a Friday night, I had a man collapse in my restaurant. And he's having, the next day he ended up having a pacemaker. He went down. I had to pick him up by his legs. I laid him down. Now, the engine got there from medic six, but there wasn't an ambulance there. You know, he was able to be revived. He was, I mean, he was okay. I didn't have to give him CPR, but, you know, my waitress said I was giving CPR, so they were rushing there. And I appreciate the hard work that all of them do. I appreciate the work that the chief's done. I appreciate what my colleagues have done with the budget. But I really feel that the longer I've sat here and the more experience I've got, we've got a serious problem. And we need to take a look at that. And so I'm not supportive of this. I don't know if we can set up a task force, set something up, or I just, I won't support this at all. And I hope that we all take a good look at public safety or a parking lot. And I know we can say it's two different funds. It's two different funds. It's all coming from the same people. So we need to take a look at that, how we're going to spend our funds. And if it's two different funds, like I said, I'll give it to the Parks Department. I'd rather spend $62,000, and it doesn't have to be in Ward four. I'd prefer it in Ward four for equipment. But I know I toured parks on Friday, and there's one in Bob's Ward that doesn't have any equipment. It's right where my wife grew up at. It's all yanked out of there. So how are we going to spend this money? With a parking lot? If we need a tanker truck to sit there, then let's put it somewhere else. We've got plenty of room, but we can find a spot for the tanker truck. And isn't that going to be an eyesore, having a tanker truck sitting behind a $10 million building? I just, it just doesn't make sense to me, and I won't support it. And, you know, I appreciate all your comments, and let's, my motion is to deny it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Points? Anybody else?
We, when we pulled it off last time, we did ask some other questions about the use of this building, training and other things. And we had very little information last time. Can you at least respond to some of the technicalities in terms of the use of this, what the purpose is of the parking lot, who it's going to serve?
Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, the chief could say it more precisely than I can, but it meets not only the parking needs of the building, but also an important training function. And it's really both of these needs that's driving the decision. The funding for this is coming from the project account that originally built the building, so there was a capital account established for that purpose. I'm just reading from the blue letter, which talks about this in a little bit more detail, but it's essentially the training function that's setting up the urgency here, but we do need parking for the facility. And one of the things about that training facility is it's turned out to be very popular, and there's a lot of folks that come there, and the parking is a necessary thing. So maybe if you want to, if you need more information, I can have the chief comment in greater detail.
Chief, do you want to step up and comment on this?
One quick thing. I've been to that facility twice. Once for a neighborhood meeting, that there was four cars there, plus myself, and I've been there to meet with the chief at 10:30, and I think there was two cars in the parking lot. So, I mean, I'm not sure, maybe it was at 10:30, but I don't know where, I mean, I parked on the other side of the building where you guys did the park at.
I parked on the other side.
Yeah, I parked on the other side of the building. There was plenty of parking where I was at.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Kip, Chief of the Fire Department, it does serve both the parking purpose and the training purpose, but you really can't put bids out for the training pad. It's all concrete. It serves a dual purpose, so that, you know, maybe it was a little unfair to the training function to call it parking lot. But the truth of the matter is, we do need additional parking out there, particularly when we have seasonal, other city employees from the Parks Department who are coming in doing their training, when we do Iowa Law Enforcement Academy Training Hazardous Materials Task Force, group meetings, and those kinds of things, several things for our CPAT function when we're bringing in new recruits. It's not every day, but very frequently that we fill and exceed the parking there, and then we bleed out into the neighborhood, and we'd like to avoid that. This won't actually alleviate all of that, but the key for me is this allows a training prop, which originally came to the Des Moines Fire Department in 1989. This is a durable good, and it was a mobile prop. And what firefighters, and in particular members of the hazardous materials team, will do is they will use it to practice drilling, cutting holes in this. It's made of aluminum. It's, it looks like a rail car. Actually, it will look very much like all the rail cars that are on the tracks directly behind it, about 20 feet. Only ours will be in much better condition. It is true that, I would agree with Councilmember Gatto and the firefighters and everyone else, and all of the members of council who lived through all those very tough decisions about resources and numbers of people, and we are about as thin as we can be, and no one's arguing that point. The thing about this project is, while not in the original scope of the contracted service for that project, it was one of the pieces of the original design concept that came before the council. Actually, it went into many more things, the towers and other things, other phases of the training facility. When we got done with the training logistics facility project, there was some of that CIP money available to tackle one of those pieces. This comes in at $18,000 under the $80,000 estimate. That does not draw, that doesn't address your concern on the staffing end, but on the training end, it's a great opportunity. There is an opportunity to be lost here if we decide to not do the training pad. I would disagree in that if we do not add to the space, the concrete, we will have to turn down the training prop. And we're getting it back from Iowa State because they no longer have the space for it in their reorganization. And so there aren't any other takers, or anyone that has the size of service that has the potential to house this, so we'll scrap the prop if eventually this isn't done. And I've had conversations with Randy Novak, with the Iowa State Training Bureau, and we knew that that was a reality. And so originally, we would not have sought this. But then we came in under budget on the project, and we thought, oh, this is a win, not only for the Des Moines Fire Department, but the, all of the different fire departments that we partner with through our 28D for hazardous materials. We protect 723,000 Iowans with that team, and we thought this was a great opportunity to train a lot of people for a relatively small amount of funds.
Chief, do we actually generate additional revenue for your department as a result of the training that you host there with all these other groups coming in?
No, we don't. Most of the training that we do is just collaboration of different departments. Within the 28D Agreement for Hazardous Materials, there is, there are fees for service for that, and we have people come in and we more often go out and provide training for them. That's a part of that arrangement. But for all the other things we do with the 71st Civil Support Team, we're just working together. And that was one of the goals of this facility, was to try to build as many relationships that are exactly of that nature.
Chief, I think that as a council, we agreed with you in terms of constructing the facility. Public safety, I think we all see as number one, certainly through fire and our police department. And one of our responsibilities as elected officials is to look at policy and to set budgets. And, you know, I hear you talking about being thin in terms of your manning. I think that what I'm hearing from Councilmember Gatto is he has some concern as well, is we're talking about our budget, and we're talking about the future of Des Moines, and we know how Des Moines is expanding, and I know that there's some issues in Ward four. I think there's some issues in Ward two. And we have some things going on there. Occasionally, I hear from some of my neighbors in Ward three that there's, you know, some issues in one. I mean, I believe that, for me, if the council would agree to do it, that we ought to put together, as we're trying to think about budgets and think about policy, and it's an ever-ongoing issue, public safety, and certainly we're trying to always operate within the constraints of, and deliver maximum public safety within our available resources. But I think that, you know, we're hearing enough about this issue that we ought to put together a little task force, maybe as Councilmember Gatto and work with you and your folks, to talk to us about, you know, public safety, budgeting, what your plans are, how you're going to use resources. Because we get asked this. We go to, I go to 58 different neighborhood meetings, as well as, you know, occasionally Des Moines neighbors, and northeast neighbors, and some of these collective groups. They ask questions like this, and I think that we need to understand where we're going, what we're going to do, and make reasonable explanations to these folks about how we're budgeting and how we're prioritizing and how we're setting policy for the future of the city of Des Moines as elected officials. I understand it's your job to run the fire department and do all that kind of stuff, but I'd like to work with you and work with the council to, so we can get our arms around some of these issues, because these are important things. And I agree with you, public safety and Des Moines Fire has highest respect from everybody. Often, they're going on a lot of runs. They're doing a lot of stuff, and when we need them, they're always there. Want to get them trained upright. We want to make sure that how we fashion our delivery of service and backup and public safety meets the needs of all the 206,483 citizens of Des Moines.
I agree. Our people are incredible, and they work very hard. I think the opportunity to settle some of those policy things would be a real win for everybody. And all of those conversations that result in more firefighters, you'll just see me smile more and more. So I look forward to having those conversations.
I think we ought to start that sooner rather than later, and maybe we can set up some way to fashion it, knowing again, looking to our legal advisor, that probably only three of us at a time could participate in this. But I would certainly like to participate, and it sounds to me like Councilmember Gatto would appreciate-
I'd like to volunteer for that task force.
We'll have additional and better information as well later in the year and headed into the next budget process as we look at station, the station location, because that'll have, there'll be a lot of effects budget-wise in our longer-term planning, both on the capital side and on the operating side, because we know that we can't add those facilities without adding people, so.
How many parking spots, when that building was built, did you guys build it for? And how many people do you normally train on a given time? How many parking spots are in that building?
I don't know the number of parking spots in that building. I know that we have-
Wouldn't we, I mean, if we're going to build a $10 million building, wouldn't we know how many people are going to be in our next class and try to plan ahead and say, well, we need 50-some parking spots? We're not going to go back to the council and try to get $60,000 for additional parking. I mean, that just doesn't, it just doesn't, this whole thing just does not add up to me in any way, shape, or form. And I just, and chief, that's why I'm struggling with it, because this thing started off $82,000, and it started causing everyone grief, because I drew it to everyone's attention, and it comes in at $62,000. Now, maybe I need to start causing grief to everyone, and we'll get less money on all of our bids. I'm not sure. But that's a considerable amount, from engineering department to tell us it's $82,000 and now it's $62,000. That's a lot. That's $20,000. I mean, that's a significant percentage in a bid.
That's good.
Well, it's great, but, I mean, how much more is left out of the pot that you put back in when you didn't build the rest of the training facility? I'd like to know that from the CIP.
I believe the original amount, there was a, via email communication, was just in excess of $100,000. So the goal wasn't to spend what was left.
Right.
But we did make an assessment for what were we not able to do that existed within that, and we approached it from that manner.
So that's why we didn't put the tower up? I mean, are we going to come back and ask to put the tower up now, or did we not have money in the first process for that building?
That was never in the scope. That would be hundreds of thousands of dollars likely kind of project. It would have to be its own separate-
So you're going to take the railroad car, similar to a railroad car, sit it behind this brand-new building, and you're going to cut holes in it and train back there? And can you see it from the neighborhood?
Yeah, you could probably see it. I don't know if you would be able to distinguish it from the tracks that are, would be-
How many, since 1989, how many holes are in it? How many holes are in it?
You cut a hole in a piece of aluminum, then you replace that piece of aluminum, then you cut the hole. So you're not eating up the car, but you have the right kinds of connections and elevations and angles and things that you keep replacing a piece, and then you destroy that piece.
And how many firefighters do you, out of your 285 firefighters, how many train on this thing? How many do you train with that?
Well, the team would be 45. My hope would be to train 206. That's the-
So you want to train them all on this, on this, you're going to bring them all in and train them as you put this car down there?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, you said 206, not 285.
Well, there's 45 people on the hazardous materials team, and I know that we have 206 which are at the operations level, so minimally 206.
More.
No, 206 total. That includes the 45.
I just wanted to make sure, because-
Isn't there 285 firefighters you have? Or no? Am I incorrect? Or how many firefighters?
There's 285, but I'm not going to learn how to cut a hole in it. And there are other positions.
So the administration part of it, I'm not going to learn how to-
Right. We have mechanics. We have civilian employees. There's a number of people who would not ever perform-
So once you put the car down, when we put this pad, how many additional parking spots do you get on the site plan?
I'd have to ask Jeb Brewer, but I think it's around 12.
Okay. I mean, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the site plan. I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen any screen for this. I mean, it's just, you know, I'm going to come back. I haven't used $100,000, so I want $60,000 to lay this concrete pad. I mean, to me, that's, it's not going to fly. I mean, it just, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not right that we're going to do this. We're trading public safety for this, and these things just don't add up. I mean, I'm going to, I'd love to be on that task force to see what we can do about, because I know there's, I know there's some problems in Bob's- I know there's, I know there's some problems in Bob's Ward, where the response times are different and things like that. So we definitely need to take a good look at what we're going to do in the next budget cycle.
Well, I need to be starting planning now for the next budget cycle.
Absolutely.
Because it's not just easily to cover those costs.
No.
Because you need to do station, we've got about 500 additional residents out in northeast Des Moines, and there's no really close-by coverage.
No, there's no doubt about it. There's not going to be an easy fix. And unfortunately, we're short on revenue, and I've said that since I've sat down. I mean, revenue's a problem. But we can't take money like this and just, you know, I would rather give this money and put it in a park instead of a parking lot. Since it's a CIP fund, you know what? That's what I'd like to see happen with this. Because I've seen a lot of parks that need some equipment. Cray Park needs some. There's a lot of them, so.
Is this just parking, or there's a training pad? You're actually going to use it for?
This will actually, there'll be parking spots on it, and there'll be fixtures placed in where we will come in and affix this tanker car to the ground. And so while it is being used for training, it cannot be used for parking. And while it's not being used for training, people will be able to park on it.
Okay. Mr. Coleman, and then Ms. Hensley.
I've attended a couple of meetings with Joe. I know he's serious about this, and he makes really good points. He's articulated to me that this was not an issue that he went looking for. It found him when, you know, unfortunately, somebody got sick in his restaurant. And I respect you for it. On the issue of the parking garage, I am going to differ with you, but mainly out of history where I've been. I voted for the original design of the facility. We cut back elements, thinking that we had to in order to meet the budget. Then we made the budget. It's not that we keep dripping money into this bucket, it's that we didn't have to spend it all. It came in under what we estimated. So the idea was to move this back in as if, as if it was originally built with it. And now we've saved another, you know, $20,000 off the bid. So, you know, my history is that it was the council that took it out, said we couldn't afford it. If we would have known that we would have been under budget, we probably would have included it then. And it meets the overall budget that we had for the facility. That's issue number one. Issue number two, which I think you're hearing a lot of consensus about, and we wouldn't be talking about it without you, is that we really have to get to a discussion about the way we treat and address fire issues in our community. And, you know, the chief probably surprised me with his level of support when he used the word "thin." But he's an honest guy, and he's going to tell it as it is. To me, I hope we set up some kind of group that works with the chief and the city manager to look at where we're headed on this. My recommendation, and I'm not trying to squeeze off any of the volunteers that have already been there, you can go to work on this. My recommendation is to look out 10 years and say, what do we need it to look like then? The trends are staggering. You know, the number of fire service calls we've had over the last 40 years have gone down dramatically, and the number of EMS calls have gone up at a level that is astounding. I think it would surprise everybody in town. And I don't know anything about those two trends that are going to change materially. But what we know is that we have not changed the way we do fire service that dramatically over the last 40 years. You know, we take a truck and we take EMS, and we try and get four people there as quick as we can. You know, at some point, we're going to have to say, Des Moines is going to develop a new model, or we're not going to be able to afford the kind of service that our citizens need. And it could be a drastically different model. And I think that's what we have to start thinking about, how we do that, you know, 10 years from now. I don't know what the answer is, and many of you have studied fire much more than I have. But it sure makes sense to me that we have to start thinking about the way we respond to medical calls differently than we respond to fire calls. And right now, you know, we respond, you know, pretty consistently regardless of the calls that come in.
I said that the first meeting you and I sat down.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a staggering difference. Sorry.
Christine, and then Skip.
I'm going to support the recommendation here. Reason being, I look at this as no different than a change order on a project. And we're adding this. You know, Joe, I'm thrilled to death that it came in at $62,000. I know we've been lucky. It just depends on the bid environment. And we do get a lot of bids that come in less than what the construction, the engineer's estimate is. And we're always thrilled when that happens, because it's, you're never really certain. I'm supportive of a task force and/or slash a committee, whatever it ends up being called. However, I just, a word of caution, I sense from some of the comments that there's a feeling that they, that there can be some discussion about day-to-day operations here. And that's not the role of the council. The role of the council is a policymaking body. And so I think it's very clear to everybody that sits down and is part of that committee or task force that we don't slip in to say, well, we want to do this, this, and this, and we need to get pay increases, and we need to do this. Because just based upon a lot of the discussion that's been out there, I think that that's a very high probability that that can happen. So I would look to legal and others to make sure that we don't go down that road.
Skip. And then manager, I'd like you to make a couple of comments.
Since it was brought up about six, eight weeks ago, we were involved in a meeting in the manager's office, and I asked you where we were at with the RFQ for doing analysis of the northeast side and southeast side. You said you were preparing the RFQ, even though I believe we asked you to do it a year ago. Where are we at on that RFQ now?
On the RFQ, we got five responses back. And we took a look at the responses. They were all pretty good. We did not seek to put an RFP out during the, during the same timeframe as the franchise fee vote, but we have the, RFP is drafted, and it will go out to the same people. It's collaboration between our office and finance. Because we are not doing things that existed in other studies, it's simply about the GIS, GPS, and response from different stations, I would want that all to be completed by this fall, so this council can have that information and be able to digest it and take action on it in this next budget process, which would time out well for your budget analysis, any kind of votes that would be required. But that's where we're at.
So we're not sending the RFP out anytime soon?
I'd have to, I'd have to ask finance. It's not in, it's not in my office now. We were done with it when we got done drafting it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Chief? Chief thinks. Mr. Manager.
Mayor and council, it's been referenced already, but please understand, there's no villains in this discussion. What you've got is a budget where you've cut $30 million out of it in recent years. And when you make $30 million worth of cuts, you're going to have impacts. This particular decision that led to the discussion tonight was made in the Budget Balancing Act a couple of years ago, over a couple of years ago. These are very difficult things. It's never, in my experience, a matter of getting what you want in service levels. It's a matter of doing the best with what you have. And I think, I think we're all struggling with that. So please understand, there's no villains in this thing. But all of the points and the comments you're making tonight are entirely appropriate. Mr. Gatto, I think your concern about the level of service in your ward is entirely appropriate. You're doing your job. You're bringing the issues forward. That's what you should be doing as an elected official and representing your ward and calling these issues into play. Your discussion that the mayor's talking about, about looking at a process going forward, Chris Coleman's amendment about looking at the long term, all very appropriate. But I have one suggestion for you as you think about this. The decisions about fire service, as with any other service, need to be data-driven. You need to start with a common template about what your services are and what your response times are, and how that plays out across the city, and there's a whole bunch of different variables. But be data-driven. Don't make decisions based on anecdotal evidence. Come up with data, study it carefully, agree on the kind of measures that you have, get real clear about what you're trying to measure, and make sure we're measuring the right thing. And when you have the good data in front of you, then you can begin to understand what the options are and how we're doing generally. I've seen so much discussion over the years about fire service, where it's predicated on information other than good data. And that doesn't really lead to good decisions. What it really leads to is a kind of really difficult discussion you've got here about people that have different opinions about this and that. But in point of fact, it's the underlying data that describes what's really happening in the rural world that ought to be driving your decision. So I hope you approve the parking lot, because I think it's a necessary project and an appropriate expenditure because of the training function as well as the parking, and for the other reasons that have been noted. Your discussion about sort of taking some time to look at the issues and drill down particularly into the issues in Mr. Gatto's ward are appropriate. But you can't forget Bob's Ward either, because there's a lot of issues out there. Skip just alluded to it with his reference about the fire study. And we know that when we, at the end of the day, you basically have to provide fire services across the entire city, where there's equity, where you're treating everybody about the same, you're providing the same level of service. And at the end, all these things cost money, so you're going to need to match it up with that. But whatever you do, make sure you're dealing with good, hard data that accurately describes the service that's being provided, so you're able to make rational decisions about it all. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, council members.
I appreciate your comments. And you and I have had this discussion before. The biggest thing, and I'm data-driven, let's make sure that everybody's using the same data. And that's, and that's very, very important. And that's why I think that everyone needs to be in the same room and say, okay, how are we going to say what a response time is? Because you get one answer from one side, and you get one answer from the other. And that's why everybody needs to be in the same room, everybody needs to be using the same procedure to get the response time. And that's the, and then you're right, then we do use the data, and we figure it out. But we need to make sure that we're all using the same procedure to get the data. And I think that's the biggest issue that we've got right now.
I agree. And I think the matter about getting the right data, you know, maybe take a workshop and have the chief come, or whoever you want to have, and talk about what the data is and what you're measuring. And how do you measure response time? Is it when the call comes in? Is it when the truck is dispatched? Is it when the firefighter shows up at the scene? When do you measure that? And what's the, what are the dimensions of that service that you want to measure and understand? Because at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is respond to somebody's very important need.
Right.
Whether it's a fire or a medical situation.
And it's not, it's not just, however you want to do it, let's just make sure everybody's doing it the same way. If you want to say it's from your door to the hospital, if you want to say it's from when the call comes in to when you get there, I don't care. But I want to know that we're all doing it the same way. It doesn't matter how you measure it, it just matters that we're doing it consistently and we are able to get the information, so all of us here can digest what exactly is it.
But at the end of the day, you can't do it for just one area.
No.
You have to look at the whole city, because your obligation at the end of the day is to the whole city, in providing a quality of service that's roughly fair and equal for all the citizens.
And you and I have had this discussion. This pilot program, yeah, sure, it's great, but I'm not just doing it for my ward. Some things need to be switched around so the service of the city gets better.
Absolutely.
Not just Ward Four. Even though I'm here for Ward Four, but my concern is the city of Des Moines.
That's right.
And, you know, and that's why.
Joe, I agree. Let's, yeah, and I think that's the purpose of why we would put together a committee or a task force to look at it and at least sort out some of those ideas, figure out where we go, what our policy should be moving forward. And quite frankly, you know, as Mr. Coleman said, we got to look out five, 10 years. Where are we going with this? How will we supply service? Where's the service going to be needed? Where are the dollars going to come from to provide it? And I think that's the purpose of it. You've got a motion, I think.
Yes, I do.
And if you would repeat that motion.
I have a motion to deny 46 and 46A.
Deny approval.
Deny approval, yes. Oh, yes. I hit the wrong one. Sorry. Can we reset it?
Yeah, just a second. Okay, you're.
You can't make a motion that you vote against.
Three yes, four no.
I'll move to approve that number, whatever that number was.
46 and 46A.
46 and 46A. Thank you, Joe.
I've already spoke to my reasons.
As we vote on this, and I want to make it perfectly clear, that I don't want to say my vote is contingent on working forward, but we got to get this, our arms around where we're going, how we're addressing public safety, and the best of our ability within our budget constraints, make sure we have a plan moving forward for the next one year, five years, 10 years, that addresses public safety for our citizens in the city of Des Moines. And for me, that's what this is all about. And I think that I was one of the people that voted for this training facility, and I think that this is one of the components, at least in part of it, whether it's to put another piece of equipment out there, to have our people work on and train on, or supplying parking to do that. It's possible, it's within the budget, it's, we've got the money available, it has been set out for that purpose. But I don't want to, in any way, minimize the importance of the other piece, which is, which is separate for me, but needs to be addressed immediately, how we supply the best response to our citizens moving forward, and how do we allocate dollars to make that happen? So.
I'm voting yes on this, in anticipation, we have further study as to how we're going to address our needs.
Four yes, three no.
All right, let's go to 47. On 2014 ADA, Facility Modifications, Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, and Engineer's Estimate and Receive and File Bids. Council Communication Number 14-221.
No, there are two other.
Anybody here to speak to this ADA modification? Mostly in public space, is that right, Ms. Manager?
Correct.
Can we get a motion on this one?
Move 47.
Thank you, sir.
Seven yes.
48. On Southwest 14th, Quiet Street, Approving the Plan's Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, and Engineer's Estimate and Receive and File the Bids. Council Communication Number 14-237. Anybody here to speak to this?
I'm happy to move 48, and thank you, Evan, for sticking here this long. Evan's the president of the Gray's Lake Neighborhood Association that's really taken the lead on this.
Seven yes.
All right, let's show that our hearings end at 7:40. Let's go back.
And John, Captain Torrey. Sorry, I have to see back your tone.
To item 34, which is Communication Report from Chris Robinson. Chris, thank you for staying.
Yeah.
1352 East 12th Street.
Kind of messed up.
Speak regarding human rights in department slash commission.
Yeah, my name's Chris Robinson. I live at 1352 East 12th Street here in Des Moines. Yeah, I wish, could have done this earlier, it just took a few minutes, since I was right after 33. But last is the position, I guess. I'm here to talk about the Des Moines Human Rights Commission that you guys passed earlier. I'm hoping you guys take racism and discrimination serious. I don't know if the council takes it seriously, is it something that's a joke? You have only four folks on the Des Moines Human Rights. On the commission, you have seven folks. You have more folks on the commission than you do as staff. And so if you're serious about racism and discrimination in the city of Des Moines here, I would think you would put more folks on the staff so that they can deal with the issues that is happening in the city. issues that is happening in the city. You know, you need full-time folks, even though you, they said you made way for a part-time person. But I don't think the part-time person would really pan out for something that you need a full-time position for. And so why would you hire part-time if you really need full-time? And so that's why I say, how serious is the city council about this if they really plan on fighting against racism, discrimination in this city? I don't know, does the council feel that there's still racism, discrimination here? You might feel it's not here anymore.
Mayor, Evan. Chris, let me just quickly address that. We've had a number of meetings with the Human Rights Commission. I will tell you that the commission itself and our staff is working very hard to protect the needs of our citizens, whether it has to do with housing, whether it has to do with employment, whether it has to do with how they're served in a place of business, regardless of their race, color, creed, age, gender, whatever it is, we, or sexual preference for that matter, we think that people need to be protected. And that's why this council has put so much time and effort for the last year in on that exact subject. So I appreciate you bringing it up because that's why we worked with staff, with the commission, to look at a strategic plan that reaches out to our citizens to show them that our Human Rights Commission is the place to bring their concerns and their complaints, to see what we can do to educate people, to advocate for human rights, and to go out in the community and let that happen and handle the cases that come to us. We think our caseload maybe is not quite as high as what it should be. So that's in part why we're working, why we worked so doggone hard to make this happen and why these seven people have worked, and some before, because we've got a couple of new ones too. But nevertheless, we're all striving to make that happen. And I appreciate your bringing that to our attention, but you're right in line with what we're trying to get. Ms. Coleman, did you have something else you want to say?
Just to add, because you did a great job, earlier tonight, we took unprecedented steps to strengthen the commission and the work. I feel very proud of that. The mayor mentioned the strategic plan. There were like, something like 90 recommended from a third party, 90 recommended strategies that should be implemented. Something like seven of them were directed at the city council. They should do, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F. We did them tonight. And we're moving forward. So we're trying to lead by example, to follow this plan. And I'm really proud of that. Glad you came tonight. But I think if you looked at the work that's being done by the commission, the staff and the council, we've got a game plan for the first time in a long time and we're executing it.
So they'll hire more people then, as far as investigators?
You've got now the city manager and his whole staff that are going to look to see how they can support it when the need's present. We've got another person that our commission and staff has arranged with HUD to supply us. At the moment, our number of cases is not as high as it should be. It's fairly low. And the staff that's out there, can we believe handle it?
Is there advertising?
I want the city manager to make sure that's happening, give the full support to our director as he sees fit and as he needs it. And between the manager, not just this manager, but our interim and our new manager, they're going to work very closely to make sure the resources are there to take care of the needs of our people. And that's what we did tonight. That's what we voted. And that's why we've been working so doggone hard with the community, the commission, and the staff to try to create a way to better serve the citizens of the city of Des Moines.
Is there advertising in that budget?
That's part of it. You could ask our Human Rights Director. He absolutely asked for it and he got it through HUD. And we're going to try to see if that helps.
Okay. Because that would help bring the numbers up to, you know, you have to let people know that you're there in order for them to come to you. If they, if they don't know that you're there, and I know they get caught up with Iowa Civil Rights. And so they lose a lot of folks because of Iowa Civil Rights. And so that could be a problem there. And maybe there might need to be some type of sit-down and talk to see if some of the, instead of them, maybe they need to go to Des Moines Human Rights instead of Civil Rights. But, you know, that's up to the individual, I guess, or, you know, how that's going to all play out.
Right. I appreciate your comments. Could we have a motion to receive and file?
I'll move to receive and file.
Chris, thanks for hanging out.
Mayor, while we're moving to receive and file, I'm calling back a long ways. But on the counter up here are photos that were submitted during the discussion on the sign ordinance from Brian Millard. And he asked that I move them into the record.
Okay. On that item...
Trying to receive and file.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Okay, we received and filed those. And we need, can we have a voice vote on?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion. I think Mr. Coleman gave it to receive the comments. And Mr. Robinson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. All right, that takes us now to item 49. Which is Amendment to the Schedule of Fees Regarding Construction Temporary and Annual Permits Issued by the Fire Department, Fire Prevention Bureau. Council Communication Number 14-230. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, could we have a motion? Item 49 has been moved. Any discussion?
I wonder how our case is prepared for acceptance. Seven yes.
Mr. Mayor, we can...
We have a question that maybe Chief, you could get back and give a report to us in a comparison of fees. Item 50 has been withdrawn. And that brings us to the conclusion. Prior to our motion to adjourn, I again want to thank our city manager for 40 good years. Let's give him another hand. So until next time, sir.
Until next time.
Did we have a motion adjourned?
Move adjourned, Mayor?
All in favor? Yes.
They were adding, and that's a little...
That was in the consent, yeah.
There is consent.
We have to give a 24-hour notice anyway to the next meeting, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think these were in the, we already voted on the consent.
Perfect.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Sir, Mayor.
Do we have, somebody wants to make a comment?
On what is the item?
It's an issued property that's in my neighborhood on the south side.
Okay, generally, we need to make a application through the city clerk or one of the council members to put it on. And so it sounds like a, maybe what we could do immediately to help you out is, it's a concern, it's a negligent property or something?
Not negligent property, sir. It is potential illegal activity and construction without permit.
I'll come back and...
Major?
Yeah.
If you would talk to these folks and Phil also.
If you have personal on this, you're going to...
Oh, it's your word.
Okay.
All right, so...
A little busy. I haven't checked my email yet.
Major Waymeyer right behind you.
Guys that'll be able to take care of it.
And right over here. Thank you very much.